Okay, we're back on the rec-- oh, my microphone's not on. Mic's on. We're back on the record, June 20th, 2017 zoning calendar. We're going to call a case out of order. New cases, item number five, 2017, 13 B.C., 29 East 19th Street, Manhattan. Who states your name for the record?
Jay Itkowitz, Itkowitz P.L.O.C.
Aye.
Good afternoon.
I think we didn't have any open issues on this, so any other, any comments, anything else? Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon.
You too.
Okay, now, back to the regular calendar. Item number 15, 2016, 41, 22 B.C., 902912, Quentin Road, Brooklyn.
Hi, Jessica Rubenstein here on behalf of Eric Palatnik, P.C. I'm very excited to be here today to present a free parking lot proposing 71 spaces in an existing building. We did attend yesterday's review session and we heard the comments, and it sounded like, and I don't want to put words in the board's mouth, but it sounded like the board was relatively satisfied with some of the results that we presented in our most recent submission, the fact that the parking study concluded with a demand of 64 spaces and we're proposing 71. However, I also understand that some of the commissioners wanted some clarification as to the procedure on how we got to those numbers, so we have Hyrum Rothberg here today to discuss his study. I know there were some other issues or just topics raised regarding revising the plans to put the pedestrian walkway in the cellar and the subcellar. We did revise the plans to do that. We have that here today. I know there was also some back and forth about changing spots 18 and 19 in the cellar to state reservoir spaces. Our client told us that that would require approval from D.O.B., so...
Because?
Because we already got the parking layout approved by D.O.B., which was submitted, so...
Oh, so this plan was reviewed by D.O.B. and they, with an understanding that it's what's going to valet parking, they have allocated these spaces accordingly?
Yes, we submitted the approval from D.O.B. in our application. So, and we also have Frank Fili... yeah, they were here from Stonefield Engineering.
And just so I, just so I, and when D.O.B. does do that assessment, they do factor in reservoir spaces and that, and that is what, I guess here you're calling a jockey spaces or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so Frank is here from Stonefield to answer any more questions on maneuverability, because I know the commissioners also wanted some clarification on why the handicap cars go all the way down to the subcellar instead of getting off at the cellar. And I think that was it. So, I'll invite Hyrum up here to speak about the parking study, and you can address any questions about the study directly to him.
Good afternoon, Hyrum Rothberg.
So, I wanted to know how you, well, you didn't give us the results of this study. I mean, you gave us a chart, but...
It gives backup.
Did you explain how you did the study?
You mean, the survey?
Survey.
So, there were sheets passed out to, there were sheets given to people as they were coming into the building, both...
Well, did you count every single person coming in?
Every single person was counted.
And you asked if they're going to the school or to the medical office?
Well, we gave them survey sheets, so if they, and you noted that we only received a 10 percent response rate, which although might, you know, is a little disappointing, it still equates to 40 of the students in addition to, in addition to staff and also 30 or 40 of the medical office patients as well.
But you were very specific regarding the person trips for the school and the person trips for the medical office.
Yeah, because we had, we had people, we had people stationed up where, they have different entrances.
Oh, okay.
The school isn't at the same place as the medical, they have to go up.
So, as they came in, did you record the time? Is that how you got the temporals?
Yes.
Because I was like, how did you get the modals? The modals, but you got it from the survey?
Correct.
From the paper reports, which was...
That was from the actual survey, the sheet sent over to us.
To some degree, less than 10 percent of the people coming in the building.
Correct.
And you think that's a good result?
Well, it's not, it's not a great result. We can't force people to give us information, and there was no personal information asked on those, on those, on those forms. But the 10 percent, it's actually, it's 40, it's 40, you know, 40 students and 40, 40 people at the medical office. So, yeah, we feel that that's, you know, it's a good start, it's a good representation of what the, of what the mix is.
So then, from the paper survey, they gave it back to you when you were leaving? Or they gave it to you right then and there?
No, they gave it to us right then and there. Because there was nothing...
Okay, and that's how you got the temporals?
Correct.
So, when they were agree, when they agreed to stop and talk to you, basically that's what happened, right? Some people are like, "I'm too busy," and they keep walking.
Yeah, they didn't want, they were, "I have a class to make, I have an appointment to make."
Right. So, when they agreed to stop and talk to you, you asked them questions and then you filled out the forms, or your staff?
Well, we let them, well, we let them fill it out, and, you know, because sometimes they don't want that interaction.
Okay. All right.
All right. And then the other question was, so you did these other two studies before?
Correct.
They came up with a higher demand. Can you just talk about how you, how you...
Yeah, and in fact, you know what I'd like to do, too, because I created this for the board. No, that was my secret.
Oh, let me see. Thanks. Chee-chee. Thank you. Thank you. He's on extra here.
Yeah, that's...
Sorry. Somebody, somebody's...
It's Tracy's actually.
So, you know, this is something a little, it's pertinent, but it's a little off-topic. Basically, what we have here, we have different rates, different parking rates for medical offices that have been either approved by the board or approved by the city of New York in addition to what our rates are for the subject, the subject project. So, for instance, you'll see that a couple of weeks ago, the board approved a parking reduction for a medical facility on Habermeyer Street with a daily person trip rate of 15 people per thousand square feet. Then you see the Domino Sugar Development, F.E.I.S., and then the East New York F.E.I.S., which was the city, and then you see our survey information for another project that we had here just earlier, 2102 Avenue Z, and then you see our trip rate for the, for the Quentin Road application. So, basically, what I wanted to show is the different rates for different facilities at different places throughout the city, that there's no, there's no one set, set guideline. So, for instance, the Domino Sugar rate of 43, 43 trips per thousand square feet with an auto share of 25 percent, that's, that's more akin to what the I.T.E. rate is, which is a national, national rate based around the entire country, which is about 44 percent. And you see that at our Quentin Road, we're, you know, we're just, we're just a little bit, we're just a little bit under that, that national, national trip rate, but we're double what the rate was for Habermeyer Street.
And what about East New York? Why is that so high?
East New York is high because they use the new approved Department of Transportation rate, which is based on a hospital, hospital relationship.
Oh, so sometimes it's based on the actual, specific medical use?
No, no, this one is the standard that we see on all...
That's the standard, that's the standard we've been using, and you said, you know, "Mr. Rothberg, we don't necessarily like this standard in Sheepshead Bay or this area." You know, what is that? And I explained that in addition to a lot of people in the city being a little concerned that the rates are high, it's based on a relationship with a hospital. So, in other words, it's like where I am, North Shore Hospital has Northwell Medical Offices all over the place. They're all affiliated with North Shore Hospital, and they seem to, that drives a lot higher trip rate than some of these private practice offices that aren't affiliated with hospitals.
Because Northwell gets patients referred from the hospitals.
Correct, and plus the insurance policy, a large care connected insurance policy, you have to use Northwell doctors part of the North Shore Hospital system. So, that's what D.O.T. use for determining the trip rates.
And so, if you were to use the E.I.S., the Domino Sugar 43 number, did you use that on a prior study? I'm just wondering if that would...
We use, we use, we use, we have used that on prior studies.
No, but on this project, because we had two prior...
We did. What we did, what we did originally on this project is we used the medical trip office rate from the Jamaica, downtown Jamaica, E.I.S.
Which was, which was what, 127 initially?
Uh...
Because you started with a lot, you started like 90.
It was like 90, and then we revised it again, and the reason we revised it again is because at some point, the facility was not going to be open in an operation on Saturday, so we took out the Saturday, but then they just, it was determined that they were going to be open on Sunday, so we went back out and we did Sunday. So, things were changing on the fly, but what we ultimately did, too, is we changed the source that we use from, from the Jama, from the Jamaica study to, to the Metro Tech E.I.S.
Okay.
And what we failed to do is note that in our source on the study that we submitted. So, we had a drop from, I think it was a parking event of 90 cars to 70 cars?
73.
Certainly, with the same information, but it wasn't the same information. It was our mistake, and I think I noted this at the last hearing, that we, you know, we had made an error in our submission and we didn't update the new source that we were using.
Right.
And that's why the rates changed.
Right, okay, that's the, that accounts for the rate, but do you know what your trip rate was for the one that came out at 73?
I don't.
The reason that I'm asking is because if you, you know, so Domino Sugar E.I.S., for example, that was a major environmental survey, right, which was accepted by city planning to go through a whole ULR process.
That's right, and that was based on medical, medical offices in Manhattan from many years ago.
Oh.
That wasn't, that was, that was based on a rate that...
Wouldn't apply, I think that's...
In early 2000, which wasn't, but for expediency for the city for that particular project, they used that rate.
Oh, okay. From Manhattan?
Because the auto share is much lower for the Domino Sugar.
Yeah, well, that's, they, they used, they used Manhattan.
But wait a second, but the trip rate, which doesn't have to do with how many automobiles there are, arguably, that's kind of a high trip rate because it's Manhattan, right? So, if you had a group medical practice someplace in Manhattan, arguably, you'd have more trips maybe because it's more population surrounding the office use.
Well...
I'm trying to understand, like, how you correlate the 43, because, because your study only had, say, a 30, a 40-person response rate, right, or 10 percent response rate?
Correct.
I'm trying to kind of work between an F.E.I.S. that used sort of a, however they established this number, but I know it was based, you said it was based on Manhattan rates?
It's based on Manhattan.
But it's trip rates, it's not automobile usage rates, right?
No, it's person, it's person rates, not automobile.
So, I guess I, when you used the seven, when you arrived at 73 spaces, because the request here is 71 spaces, right? So, this, I'm wondering whether you would get to around 71 or 73 if you applied the 43-person trip rate and then you did the analysis based on auto, auto usage rates?
Sure, sure, I mean, I can, it's easy enough to look at.
Yeah.
And our rate would be higher, but I do think that we'd be, because originally we used the, the higher trip rate, we used the east, I'd have to look, I'm sorry, we used the Jamaica, but I'd have to run the number, but I think we'd still be under the, under the threshold.
Okay, under like 71?
Under the 71, under the 71 threshold, and, you know, quite frankly, you know, yes, we only got 10 percent. I wish it had been more, but as the testimony here from, from the applicant and also from the people at the building, you see that the utilization rate in the garage is, is, you know, it's, it's underutilized, severely underutilized.
Right. So, I'm wondering if while we focus on some of the other issues, you might be able to do a little bit of back of the napkin and calculating?
I will.
Just to make sure, I don't know if you have your materials here?
I do, I'll just step out for a second.
Yeah, yeah. And just to understand that, because I don't want to have yet another parking study, I'm just trying to understand what was the backup for the 70, whatever, three-person demand before, and if it was higher than 43 trips, then we know that you would fall under using Domino, right? So, okay.
Jessica Rubenstein again. I think the other question outstanding was why handicapped visitors would come down to the subcellar, and Frank is here to explain that from...
State your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Frank Fili Chita with Stonefield Engineering. Good to see everyone, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The question was regarding, I believe, the parking operations plan that we had prepared specific to handicap visitors, parking in the subcellar. That was really, and my apology for making it confusing if it was, but it's, it's really intended as flexibility. They don't have to park in the subcellar if it's not convenient for them to do so. They can certainly drop their car off in the cellar level, give their keys, give the keys to the valet and proceed up the elevator. What, what the idea was is to provide enhanced flexibility for a vehicle that might be transporting two or three handicap people, that they could go down to the subcellar and unload in an area that is quieter, has a designated space, striped for a handicap parking space, there's a loading zone immediately to the, adjacent to it, and then proceed up the elevator from the subcellar. It was really just flexibility, it doesn't have to happen that way. It could be on a case-by-case basis.
Because they could also pull into a jockey space?
Correct.
Arguably, right?
Correct.
That's closer to the elevator?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Did you have other questions about that?
I don't know if you will be answering that question. It was more with regards to if I drive my car down to the cellar level and I leave my car there, I just, the drawings and the plans, it doesn't show the area carved out for the pedestrians to walk from that drop-off area or, or the pickup area to the staircase or the elevator.
So, that was a recent revision that was just made in response to the comment yesterday. The plans had always provided, at least on the subcellar plan, a striped and hatched area, and I'll wait till you get there, but on the subcellar plan, you'll see that between the elevator bank and then spaces 29 and 34, there's a little alleyway there, and there was a striped area there that had always been striped on the subcellar plan. We've labeled that pedestrian walkway just for ease of review, and then we duplicated that same striping on the cellar plan, one level up.
Yeah.
So, the idea would be that someone would surrender their keys to the attendant in the cellar and then immediately walk towards that area.
And where will I surrender? Where will I have to leave the car?
The idea would be that the attendant office in the cellar, adjacent to spot number 21, is where the attendants will be, you know, doing the business of the valet system. Car will be directed to pull up a little bit beyond that, and that's where the surrender of the keys would, would occur.
So, in 19, then?
Well, that, that was the question that the board had regarding the reservoir spaces 18 and 19. I, I tend to agree with the board. If that's what you'd prefer to see, we'd be more than willing to accommodate that.
That seems logical.
I agree.
It says for, for me to drive there, I'll just leave it there and I'll, then I don't have to walk even that far to get to the pedestrian walkway, but if D.O.B. has factored all of this in...
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't totally get how, where D.O.B. thought you were leaving the car on top of that number two sensor.
Well, there is a, I should point out, there is an approximately 11-foot-wide aisle there between the, between space 19 and then the row of 90-degree angle spaces. Average car is approximately six, maybe six feet, three inches.
So, you could have two, kind of?
You'd have enough space to open your door there, give the keys to the person, and then still walk back to the pedestrian space. So, I think that might be where they were coming from.
Where they were thinking. I don't think we need to get into the arcane driving skill sets of valet parkers, so I would just leave it. So, you made these changes to the drawings, can we consider these submitted?
Yeah, I can copy.
Yeah, I mean, do you email them to submit?
Yeah.
Jessica Rubenstein again. I'd be happy to email them right when I get back to the office today.
That's all we need, yes.
Okay, so I'd like to consider them filed?
Sure.
I mean, submitted, because we have them in our hands.
Yep.
In the old days, that's what you did.
As long as we have the electronic version of it.
Okay, right, okay.
Preferably today.
So, maybe what we could do is put this on for second call while Mr. Rothberg is actually doing the math, you know?
He also asked to go...
I think Eric wants to go see if he was ready.
Oh, the signage, yes. So, the other question, which we could, I think, make a condition, we don't need to, I don't think we, was that sign that's just a little sandwich board that says "free parking"? How do I know it's free unless I already know it's free? I'm there.
Well, so, we heard your comments yesterday, and we said, "Okay, the board just wants a bigger sign, we're happy to do that, it's an easy fix." And we actually went around to different parking lots around the city to get ideas of what other lots do. I have some pictures that we took of other parking lots, and it shows that they, other commercial lots that are charging and they're trying to attract customers for a profit actually have signs on the wall in the building that are of similar size. So, again, the owner, the applicant, told me before this hearing that he's willing to do whatever the board would like just to get this started. He has, he has cancer patients that are waiting to be treated, there's no room, they're dying to expand the operations.
No pun.
I'm sorry?
Phrasing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
They would love to expand.
They are excited to expand their operations to the lower floors. They have patients that are on waiting list, they're just waiting to be treated, so, again, we're happy to concede wherever we can. If the board would like a larger sign, we're happy to make a larger sign. We would just like the board to tell us exactly what that was like.
But what, do you have photographs of what you saw?
Yeah, I have photographs.
Just so we can get an idea of what people do?
That was...
How is this the comparable size?
Inside.
Inside?
That giant.
This, you mean this little one here?
Right.
No, but, so, maybe I'm missing something. The only sign that I saw that says "free parking" was this sandwich board that's on the sidewalk.
That's...
As, so how else do you know to park? Is there a sign that says "parking"?
Well, it's not, there's not a large sign affixed to the building, it's just that sign that says "free parking" for 902 Quentin.
Right, so...
So, if...
It seems like there should be a sign that, so you know to go park there.
They could apply for a permit to install a larger sign, that would be fine.
Okay. Like this one you're saying, the early bird special?
Right.
And that's the only sign they have?
That's...
And nothing else? So, that's, this is kind of implying that people just know there's a parking garage here?
Yeah, in my opinion, that's pretty much.
But is it open to the public?
It is open to the public, but there isn't any sign that's visible. There is, occasionally, there'll be a sign that would say "full parking lot," that's it, but everything is posted inside, and there isn't any sign even outside on the building indicating there's a parking lot. And pretty much all the parking lots in our, parking garages in our building don't have any signs, they are just in, I mean, it's all inside, you have to go in to see the rates and, or if it's free or not.
You also have to think about the fact, when something says "free," it tends to look a lot larger than something charging, so people can see "free" from a mile away.
Right, okay. All right. See how that works with the word "free"?
It screams.
But it does say "no public parking," so don't get any ideas, you freeloader type. Right, okay.
We are back.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Hyrum Rothberg. So, we did a back-of-the-envelope calculation, and using the Domino Sugar rates, we would be in capacity.
So, you would be at 71?
71 spaces, correct.
Okay, good. So, whichever, so Domino rates you could say is reliable because an entire E.I.S. depended on it, as opposed to empirical data from a survey of 10 percent of the...
Correct, although, you know, we, again, state, nothing's better than the actual survey, which we've been in part put by the board very, very well.
Yes. Yeah, the actual survey is great, but, you know, a perfect survey where you would have had more time is, you know, a couple of days of sampling so that you'd get a range.
I understand.
You know, so in future, when you're doing surveys, the sam, the data sampling should be broader, that's why I kind of wanted to use another E.I.S.'s basis, because at least, you know, the whole ULR action depended on that, so, okay.
Thank you.
Is that all right with you?
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, okay, good. All right. So, what do we think about the sign for the parking here?
I'm fine with that.
I think I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right, so I have to use their expertise in the parking department. Okay, so then, I think all the questions have been answered. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so then, I would like to close this, consider this submission submitted, and I don't think there were any conditions, right? No, okay. So, for a motion to close?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
And for motion to grant?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Thanks so much, and I apologize for the inappropriate reference earlier.
Don't let it haunt your sleep.
Item number 16, 2016, 41, 27 B.C. Del Angelo?
Dennis Del Angelo, the applicant, representing the owner. I attended the session yesterday. I'd like to go over three particular items, but before I do, I'd like to address something that Vice Chair Chanda brought up regarding that one-story portion on the south side of the building. I went back and checked where that, where I came from with the two-story. If you look at the Sanborn maps, which we submitted...
Initial submission?
Last submission.
The most recent submission?
Should be, the Sanborn.
Oh, Sanborn? No, so, a submission before the...
Submission with the survey, the Sanborn.
Okay, so that was the first submission? Or let's say, the, the pre-hearing submission?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Okay, yes.
Okay. If you look at these houses along 26th Street, apparently, the Sanborn Map Company reversed the buildings. And looking at that map, I looked at it, two stories, had the bump, and I thought I was home free.
It was uniformly, one story.
But apparently, what it is, is they actually reversed all of these buildings.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So, we will change our submission, obviously. The little porch on the top will be taken out of the floor area of the existing, we'll redo the perimeter wall calculations, which is one of the issues we're going to discuss today. It does work, but I can, that is where that came from, and I appreciate that observation. The demolition, or partial demolition of the building. If you look at the proposed drawings, we do show the dotted lines for what is coming out, and if we could look at P3, which is probably the easiest one to deal with.
Okay, hold on a second, let us just get there.
P3 of the last submission.
P3 in the last, most recent submission.
Right. We show the existing, the dotted lines for what... Right. We show the existing, the dotted lines for what's being removed, and the new construction. So this might be an easy place to start. What I did, even though I have no control over means and methods, that's up to the GC, and they are expected to follow the plans, and the building department expects them to also, what I did is I just made a short listing of how I believe this could be accomplished, based on these drawings. We have maintained more than fifty percent of the existing perimeter walls on each floor, which is shown by calculation.
So, before you go further on that, so if we went to P4, and then we go to your calculation sheet, which I have to find.
Which is in the existing, the existing set, E5.
All right. So on E5, does everyone have E5? If you were just look at the wall on the left side, that's shown as almost entirely retained, right?
Yes.
And then you look at the drawing on the first floor of that wall.
Yes, it's there.
It is a little section next to a closet and a little sink and a toilet, and then there's a big opening, so it's not there. And then there's a teeny section next to, inside of a closet, and then there's nothing more, right? So, so those little bits of teeniness inside the closet is incredible, because nobody builds like that, and even if you instruct them to build like that, they won't. But in addition to which, it's not the retention of the existing building, it's, it's like a little bit of lip service to the existing building. And if we do the same with the part at the top, you're showing, in the same E5 drawing, you're showing the little horizontal portion that pops out to the, that little extension in the side, you're showing the horizontal as being entirely retained in the calculations, when only a little return around the sink is being retained. And then you go up, and the only thing arguably that's being retained really is the section, the horizontal section at the top, on the side lot, side yard line. And then the return is missing, which is shown as being retained in the calculations. So, it doesn't look like the picture.
Okay. In response to that, going back to P4, this building is going to have a ten-foot first-floor ceiling height. We're raising the entire existing deck. We went over this before. It's balloon framing, the joists, the studs go from the cellar to the roof. They used to be able to do that, they don't have any trees that can do it, and it's also a fire hazard, there's no fire stops. However, because of that construction, it is very simple to disconnect the first floor, the second floor deck, and raise it up. Now, in doing that, the openings that you're looking at at that wall, it's the east wall that we're talking about, the wall between the kitchen and the bathrooms and whatever, the areas that you're pointing out that are obviously short on the drawing, they're not shown as being removed of the exterior wall, because it's only an archway. The rest of the wall is there. You know, we're putting openings and doors in these walls. The wall is going to be a ten-foot wall. So the wall is there, we're just putting an archway and a doorway, and if you go towards the stairway, where the elevator is, there's a door in that, but the exterior wall is going to remain. The only portion of the exterior wall that's being removed is the area where the stair is, and that's shown on the calculations. The area where the stair is has the dotted lines, and that wall is being removed there.
Okay, so let's get back again to the...
To the second floor.
So let's just stay on the first floor for a minute, okay? So, we had another application, which we discussed earlier, where was that, on Shore Boulevard, Shore Road, something like that? Shore Boulevard, where it was an application that looked exactly like this, only the house was much, let's say, the house that was subsuming, the original house that was inside, was much bigger. But there was, there were only little bits here and there maintained. And the board said clearly, this is not the retention of an existing house. And the board said to the architect and the owner, you need to go back and redesign the house. This doesn't look any different from that. This is little bits, and the architect said the same thing, I'm keeping the arch. Well, for one, we can't regulate whether there's, actually shows up as an arch, but for two, that's not keeping the framing of a house, you're supposed to be keeping the house. And this has so little of the existing house retained, you, you just look at the plan, there's only one wall that's legitimately retained here, and that's the wall that's up against that side yard that's on the south side. Everything else is subsumed. That's not the intent of this special permit, to be, to eliminate the existing house. It's supposed to be an enlargement of an existing house.
And, so.
And it isn't. And, you know, to be consistent with the board's decision on that case on Shore Boulevard, and many other cases where the board came to the same conclusion, you need to retain more of the existing house, and this isn't doing it. And I don't know how you do it exactly, but this isn't doing it. So, and to talk about how you're keeping a little return next to the shell, and there's an arch, and somehow it's flying in the air on that, on the right angle, I don't even understand how I can do that. And then, you're removing the wall underneath on the second floor, so the second, and I understand that you're raising the height of the second floor, but you have a floor that used to have bearing, and it no longer has bearing on the second floor, that same exact wall is missing on the first floor.
Well, that's, that's really not an issue. It's a construction issue which I can address in the methods in construction. But I think, looking, I don't know what the other plan looked like.
Well, you can, you can get a copy.
But I know what this plan looks like, and I know what I'm looking at. If there's a, even if it's an eight-foot door, it's still an opening in a wall. And to consider the fact that we can't have openings in wall, I mean, we're not going to consider...
No, it's not saying that you can't have openings in walls, it's saying that you need to retain actually existing structure, and then that's a significant amount, so that we can say it's an existing building that's not being demolished. And, and, you know, and we don't necessarily look at the same criteria that the Department of Buildings looks at, which they determine whether you file it as a new building or as an alteration. We're looking at it in terms of, do you have an existing building to remain that will be enlarged? And these drawings, if you were to show them to anybody, would not find the existing building in there. Like, go find it.
Well, I think that's the point. If I give you an elevation of that wall, it would be a wall with a door in it, a wall with an arch in it, a wall with an opening going into the elevator. And if you look at the E5 drawings, it is specific on the walls that are being removed. They're shown dotted on this plan, so we can stay on this plan. The wall that's being, the portion of the existing exterior wall is being removed on the north wall, which is where the stair is, is the area where the stair opening is. That wall on the left and right side, the corner of the building, there's a bathroom door in that wall.
It's a closet and a bathroom door, right.
It's a door. So, I mean, we're retaining a wall, and because there's a door in it, I understand what you're saying, that it bits and pieces of white on a drawing, but because there's a wall next to a door, doesn't mean that the entire wall is being removed. And the way this building is going to be constructed, the entire building is going to stay in, in place until the new frame is done. And then all they do is go in with a sawzall and cut out the walls that are being shown taken out at that point. But the structure is remaining. And the first floor deck, the second floor deck is going to be there during construction and after construction, it's being utilized in the new construction.
So the guy with the sawzall is going to keep going, because he's, you know, the guy with the sawzall is not a watch, watchmaker, and once you start the cutting, why in the world would you keep that little bit of a return for a little piece of the bathroom wall, when instead, you'd, and then have to extend the bathroom wall by a foot and a half? You wouldn't.
Because the wall will be there. The walls will not be taken down until the entire new frame is on, including the roof. At that point, it's self-supporting, the new walls are supporting the old, the old walls are there, and it's a very simple matter of just cutting them out.
You know, the architect could make the same argument about the other house that looked exactly like this in terms of the amount of demolition, and once you open up, demolition to be essentially the removal of an existing house, then the special permit has no meaning.
Well, that's why we do the calculations.
No, but the calculations also have no meaning, because you're using arches and you're using doorways and including them, even though there's no wall there, and should you, and if the aesthetic of it were instead not to have an arch, because what do you want an arch for that's so old-fashioned, then there's no arch, and then there's no remaining wall anymore. I mean...
Well, I'm sure that, you can look at this door, it's in a wall, it doesn't go all the way up to the ceiling.
For the doors, but not for the other openings.
The door. So, all of the other openings that are shown on this drawing, that do not have a dotted line, are not going up to the deck of the second floor, which would be removing the wall. I agree with you. The dotted lines are the wall being removed from the deck to the deck. Those are the walls that are being removed. The walls that are staying, some of them have openings in them, but the wall itself is remaining until the entire new frame is built. The way I see this building being built, and I don't do supervision on these jobs, but I do go out to the jobs.
Right.
If I could explain how this is done. And it's maintaining the existing building in its entirety through ninety percent of the construction, until, like I said, the entire new frame is up, they're ready to put in windows.
But you don't, you said yourself, well, I don't even want to get into whether you do supervision. I don't, I think that the board can't be in the position that it deals with a drawing that shows the total demolition, except for one wall of the entire building, and then somehow, the contractor is going to hold stuff up until, I mean, that's just not believable.
Well, I, I'm looking at the same drawing you're looking at, and assuming that these are openings in walls, we are keeping the entire east wall, we're keeping the north wall up to the stairs, we're keeping the corner of the building, the outside corner of the existing building with a bathroom door in it, we're removing the east, the west wall, we're removing that completely, and these are the exterior walls. And because there are openings in them, there's, we're not going to start showing at every doorway that we're removing two feet of the wall. I mean, that, that's not what we're showing. We are showing the existing perimeter walls from deck to deck remaining in place. If we want to look at elevations of the openings, I can provide those to you. I can give you a percentage of the openings in the wall, which is sometimes required by the building department on exterior openings. Now, to say that because there's a short wall next to an opening, we get bits and pieces, I don't think that's correct. And I believe that a fifty percent perimeter wall means what it says. We give you the calculations, we show you the walls that we have worked out that are going to remain, that are going to become part of the structure, that are going to be maintained by permit, by enforcement, it's an enforcement issue possibly with the DOB, I know that they do go out on these jobs. I know that there's zoning mavens in these neighborhoods that like to go around and check and make sure that everything is done right. But this is what we are presenting. We are, as an architect, I'm given a set of rules.
Yes.
I follow the rules.
So you're following DOB's rule?
No, no, no.
About surface area and how you correct.
I am following the board's requirement to maintain fifty percent of the existing perimeter walls, and I'm also remaining, keeping the entire first and second floor deck.
I, as, as a member of the board, don't agree with your interpretation of what is fifty percent of the perimeter walls. And, you know, proof of that is that we rejected another application where they did exactly the same thing. So I don't know how to distinguish your application from that application, and the result of the other one was a redesign of the building, so that you could really see that it was in addition to an existing building. This is an, this is the retention of one nor, one south wall, and nothing, and nothing else. Because the idea of it being an enforcement issue, to make sure that DOB inspectors go and check that the, that the existing structure is being maintained, it's just not the right, you weren't here for the earlier case. It's not the job of all the agencies to check on whether the construction methods retain enough of the existing building, when the drawings don't encourage the contractor to do so. So, you know, feel free.
The way I see this, this is a very small house on a large lot.
Mm-hmm.
It has, and, and the side yards and the front yards are going to be complying. And the only way you can really enlarge this house is to enlarge into the, and with complying yards, is to widen the perimeter walls. Now, I can see how he's keeping, he's internalizing the, some of the existing perimeter walls, but he can't enlarge to the front without making new perimeter walls. He can't enlarge into the, I guess it's the south side yard, without making a new perimeter wall. Because of the way the house is located on the lot, the way it's articulated with these indentations, it's, it's almost...
Well, so, I disagree that it's impossible, because there are many ways to design a house. And so, for example, that, that wall that's being, that has the staircase in it, that could be a recess in the house, and then you're retaining opposing walls, and then the house could come out and have, you know, be shaped, sort of star-shaped or, or something like that. I mean, not star-shaped, whatever.
But that would be a seventeen-foot rear side yard instead of, versus an eight, correct?
No, I'm not saying pull the whole house back, but I, by the way, we also talked about other issues, neighborhood character issues, that the house is very large, right? So maybe pulling it back more is required to fit with the neighborhood character. But I'm saying, if you, for example, I don't want to design the house, but for example, if you pulled the wall back to where the opposing north wall is, then you've got a believable retention, which we see often, of opposing walls where the framing goes from wall to wall and is, and is kept there, and then, then the, and in this case, then it could have a recess, little port, and then it could pull back out, for example. I, I don't, I don't want to design the house. But there are ways of retaining more of the structure.
I think the other concern, I can speak for myself and some of the, some of the comments that you have heard here from yesterday's hearing, is that there is a lot, lot more circulation space that's been allocated to this building than we typically see. And as Commissioner Montanez said, that, you know, the original building footprint was much smaller, and you're enlarging it. But be that as it may, even then, the amount of circulation that has been given to this larger footprint is, is quite generous. And I think if you tighten that up, it'll address some of our concerns, and one of them would be the, and, and that would actually encourage you to use the perimeter wall in a much more creative way to retain more of it, and then also address the bulk of, of the building and the FAR.
We'll get into the bulk, but to address the chair's comment about moving it back, looking at drawing P4, looking at the existing wall, which I contend I'm retaining, with the elevator door, the opening for the stair, the bathroom door could be thrown in there. Keeping that wall as it is, as a wall, and eliminating the portion that you're talking about, and using that as an exterior wall, what do we have? I have an exterior elevator door, I have a door coming in from the outside, I have two windows, three windows. So I'm putting holes in the partition, in the, in the wall as it is. If we're not going to count on the holes in the wall as being part of the wall, we have the same problem. Because if I retain the existing wall, can I not make new openings? If I close off old openings, do I get credit for saving the old opening and I made a new opening? That's not what we're talking about in perimeter walls.
No. What we're talking about in perimeter walls is that on the houses that are clearly in compliance with the threshold question, we most of the time see opposing walls that are used as the exterior walls, or at least catty-corner walls used as the exterior walls. So we... So, we still have some remnant of the original house somewhere visible in this whole thing. And, you know, when we talk about floor area, if you remove all of this, like the floor area of the original house already spilled out all of its sides, right? So, you know, what the board's idea of the 50% rule, I don't actually know where that came from. It's not actually a rule. It seems to be a general concept. But the idea that you're retaining an existing house would be more, let's say persuasive, because at the moment I find it not persuasive, if you retained that southern, northern wall as the exterior wall of the house, then I know that the joists continue to run from one end to the other, both on this floor and on the next floor. And now you can say, at least you have this much of the house that's intact. And then your contractors don't have to play some sort of insipid game of keeping little bits to put in the closet and in the bathroom and all this sort of stuff. So, which I don't believe they'll do.
Well, whether they, what they do is not why I'm here.
No, it is.
But my prerogative, and what I am told, is you must retain 50% on each floor of the existing perimeter walls, which is what we endeavor to do as applicants, to get our special permits and get on with our whatever.
With getting on with your whatever is, the best way of doing that is to listen to what you're hearing here.
Well, what I'm hearing here is that we're looking at an existing exterior wall with the floor plate still sitting on it, except for the stair opening. In other words, the floor joists are running north to south on this building. So, it means that the floor deck is sitting on that north wall. And we're maintaining the north wall up until the opening for the stair, where we're making a hole in the existing floor. But that wall is still supporting the second floor.
The joists are running north-south, you said.
They're running north-south.
Okay, right.
So, they're bearing on that wall.
Okay, and then you're going to have an exterior wall that they're bearing on.
Which is staying in place. The exterior wall internally is still the old exterior.
We've already, I'm getting, I'm going to get Ryan in a second saying we've already beaten the horse. I can feel it dying. Okay, so, we're going to move on from this. I think I've made myself clear. I think Commissioner Shonda's made herself clear. I think that there are design solutions that you can accomplish this with. We need to move on to the next aspect, okay?
Okay, the next aspect from yesterday. What do we got? The neighborhood character.
Yes.
At the last hearing, what I got from the last hearing, and I could be wrong, but I looked at the tape and I can't be that wrong, was that the idea of setting the mass of the building away from the street was acceptable. The comments made by Vice Chair Shonda regarding the front of the building and especially by the chair regarding the adorable cottages as my proxy client, I think my last submission, this submission, addressed that to a T. The front of this building has the exact roof line as the existing buildings, the exact pitch, the exact overhang, and it's at the exact same level as the old roof. And it actually looks like the old buildings if you look at the street facade. Now, as far as I walked away from that...
How do we know it looks like those buildings?
If you look at...
There's a streetscape with the adjacent...
You could look at the streetscape, but you could also look at, at just my elevation. You have the existing building and you have the cottages. There's one of them right next door. You look at P14.
Yours looks like one that's a little...
There's the cottage. You're looking at the same roof, the same height, the same even, in fact, they're even higher than I am. I'm lower. But this is what you're going to see from the street. That roof in the back, as was brought out last time, is going to the back of the building. We pushed the mass of the building back. Now, last time, I was told that the front is extremely important.
Yes.
Trade-off at the rear is manageable. Now, what I took away from that was do something with the front. Look at the adorable cottages. Don't ignore the six-story building, which is encroaching two inches onto the property of my client. You know, ignore the garages that are lined up in the back and do something about the front. I want the front to look like those cottages, was what I was told, which is what I did. And that wasn't mentioned yesterday, but I think it does deserve some kind of recognition.
Okay, so, no, I did recognize, I said that you did slope the front back, which was not occupiable space before, right? So, but I didn't see any, I mean, for instance, most importantly, the reduction in floor area is lip service because it's clear, very clear from your own statement that it's in preparation for an upzoning. That's not how to approach an application here, right?
Well, it's not a preparation. I didn't say it was a preparation. But the fact remains that currently, city planning is going around to Staten Island, to Fourth Avenue in Brooklyn, and they're upzoning everybody. Now, I'm not saying they're going to do it here. However...
Wait for that.
However, the building department will accept the double-height spate if you have a window where the floor is going to go, which is exactly what we did. We show windows on the elevations in place where the floor would be in a double-height space.
But you didn't reduce the, so...
I reduced the floor area down to .99.
No, simply by removing the floors.
Removing 1,300 square feet of floor area. You remove 1,300 square feet of floor, which is what I did.
Yes, but then you can easily put the floors back in and you're back where you were.
You can easily build a gas station in the backyard, but they're not going to do it.
I'm sorry, but you said yourself in your application materials that, that it was designed so that you could easily increase the floor area should the zoning change. The section shows that all you'll do is put the floor back because that's what the drawing showed before. And so, and the only function of the attic is a lounge that doesn't have any windows.
It has a skylight. There's a beautiful, there's two skylights.
No, but please, I don't want to play a game with you. This is a game. It's not a game here, right? You're asking for waivers, specific waivers. You're asking to, for, for opportunities that sometimes impose on neighbors in a way that's not acceptable. And so, you can't justify having a rear yard in position and side yard in positions and all that sort of stuff and then play a game that, like you're having this double-height space, right? So, so the answer is if you really want to reduce the floor area, reduce the floor area. If you really want to respond to the comments about not performing with neighborhood character, respond to the comments, not just in the front, but also in the rear. So, we said it's too big of a building. It's got too much floor area. You can't just then remove a floor and say, "I'm done." Because as I often say, you don't perceive floor area, you see bulk. And in this case, I'm seeing the bulk the same, except that you dropped down the front where you did not change the, you didn't change any of the interior, right? Because that was always unoccupiable space. And then you rendered the attic area unoccupiable simply by removing the floor so that you can go in whether or not the zoning changes. And, not you, because I'm hoping that you wouldn't do that with your client, but your client can easily go in and put the floor back in as soon as it's done. And that's not okay. It's not acceptable. It encourages illegal behavior and all of that. And in addition to which, it doesn't reduce the massing. And you haven't, I justified the depth of this rear yard, yeah, the change in the depth of the rear yard.
The rear yard was addressed at the last hearing. And the mass of the building was also discussed at the last hearing.
It may have been discussed, but it wasn't resolved with satisfaction.
What I took away from that last hearing was the cottages and the street front. If you look at photographs, we're talking, I know that the chair has a thing with the rear yards and the immediate neighbors.
It's not a thing, excuse me, I want to correct that. It's not a thing with the rear yards. It's neighborhood character. You're looking at everything in the neighborhood. It's got side yards, front yards, rear yards, massing, height, all of those things. It's not a thing, excuse me, sir, right? And I'm reading from my own notes from the last time, that full encroachment on the rear yard is not supported by the site conditions. The bird's eye photo shows the rear yard alignment of all of the houses on the block. So, how do you justify that unless you make an urbanism argument? You haven't done that. And then another comment was, this project is too aggressive for the site. So, what I'd recommend you do, so that we don't keep on with this because we have other hearings, that you go back and you look at being more respectful of your adjacent properties, of the, of the neighborhood, of the fact that the building needs to retain more of the existing structure in a real sense. And let us move on to the next, okay? Are there any speakers on this? Anybody want to add anything to that?
If I could address the adjacent neighbors in this particular instance, I know that there have been other discussions on the adjacent properties and how these things are overwhelming them. But in this particular case, if you look at the photographs, just the photographs, photograph 15 is the building directly behind this building. The garage in the lower portion of that is a story and a half. If you look at photograph 12, this is the view from my client's property. That's the one and a half-story garage with the people on the other side of it. The garage to the right is the immediate neighbor. If you look at the drawing, photograph 42...
We can't get there this fast.
Which is a three-story building. 42 is the, the character along King's Highway. These buildings are adjacent to my property. Now, looking at it from this neighborhood character, I understand the sensitivity we're looking for with the cottages. But if you look at my backyard, it's a wall of garages. We're taking down our garage. If you look at the radius diagram, there are three garages in my backyard. There's no way anybody is going to be affected by what we're doing in our rear yard.
How tall are the garages in your backyard?
If you look at R1, one, two, three, and the garage next door. Not to mention that the six-story building is 15 feet off the rear yard. And it's zero feet off our side yard, six stories. I've got three garages looking me in the face. I've got the garage next door. And if you look at the picture of the house next door, there's a wooden fence there. They don't even care what's going on in the back of this house. So, as far as being sensitive to the immediate neighbors, I think a 22-foot rear yard is definitely appropriate. And the mass of the building could be discussed, but...
Sorry, the garages are one-story. Your neighbor immediately has a one-story addition. The, the guys to the rear have 30-something foot, 40-foot rear yards and one-story garages in them. The only place where you've got a deep, a shallow rear yard is the six-story brick adjacent. I'll give you that. But you're not backing up against that building and you're not adjacent on the other side to that building. You're adjacent to houses with complying rear yards. So, I don't understand. So, you're, you have an argument for a one-story addition, which we talk about all the time, a one-story extension. But you don't have an argument for a three-story extension, which is what you're proposing. So, again, go look at that. Look at it from a real urbanism sense. Look at it from a real respect for the neighbors sense. That would design your building. If you looked at buildings from the outside, the shape of your building would be designed by what you see in the neighborhood. But instead of what you're, you know, promising your clients you can get them. So, I, you need to do this and I don't want...
All you can see of this house in the neighborhood is standing in the street.
Okay, we're done. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on. So, we need to pick, you're gonna need some time to, you're gonna need some time to...
I'm gonna need some time, yes.
Make these drawings, right? How much time you need?
At least two months.
Beginning September or is August 22nd still...
August 22nd is still okay for this type of...
Yes, so, your choices are coming back August 22nd with an August 2nd submission or coming back September 12th with a, one, two, three, August, sorry, one, two, three. Yeah, August 23rd submission.
I would say September, September 12th would be fine.
August, September 12th with an August 23rd submission. And I really recommend that you listen and respond to what you've heard, okay?
Thank you.
Item number 17, 2016, 4138 B.C., 32327, Avenue of America, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Paul Selver, Kramer Levin for the applicant. We had asked that this matter be laid over because we have not completed responding to the questions the board asked us to respond to at the last meeting. We are anticipating being able to file a response on July 7th. And we would then look to the board and to...
Cancelled, opposition.
Mr. Klein to work out a further briefing schedule.
Right, okay. So, what I wanted to make sure is, I don't know whether neighbors were aware that this was going to be adjourned. So, I'd like to know whether there are any members of the public who came to speak on this issue. This is the IFC Center. Anyone from the public? No, okay. All right, so then we can work on...
We had advised Mr. Klein.
Yeah, Mr. Klein, but there were other people who might have come.
We got a call yesterday.
Yeah, we got a call. Okay, so, to the point is because there is opposition, we want to make sure that people have an opportunity to attend. So, we're not going to schedule a hearing for August, right? So, so working back that way, for example, you could come to a September 12th hearing?
Let me just take a look at what we got on there. Are we okay with two with financials?
Oh, you are?
Well, there's a break, though.
But there's a two-week break, right?
There's a two-week break, so we're...
Yeah, there's a two-week break, but it's, it's a holiday break. You're okay? Because this is going to be big financials.
Well, and the other one is Van Duser, which I, I think it was tinkering.
Not so much.
Yeah, I think that, that was not a big, that wasn't a big, big financials.
All right, so, working backwards from September 12th. So, we need to receive the last submission by, two, three, August...
Actually, and I will, Mr., there is actually...
You have Windsor Oaks.
Windsor Oaks is on that same day. That makes me reluctant.
Probably, probably going to be a two.
Oh, really? It's handy to have you here, okay.
Since this morning, movies went out of boat, so I don't think this is going to go forward either. And it's not, it's going to, there's going to be a minimum request for driving.
Okay, all right. So, as long as we know it's not going to be the same because that would be too much testimony.
People with another crowd of people.
Okay, one. Okay, so that would be, I suppose, that would be one submission by August 20... Oh, we would have to have everything submitted by August 23rd, okay? So, working back, do you want a sir reply on your...
We would, we would, we would like to, as I recall, the way this was structured now is, now is we filed...
Oh, you already filed?
We haven't filed.
You will file.
They will file, but then the neighbors answered and then we replied and then that was it.
Okay, so you were planning on filing by when?
July 7th.
July 7th, all right. So, we give opposition counsel two weeks, right?
Pretty much going to be a new submission, so we can get three weeks.
I have no objection to that.
They don't have an objection, all right. July 28, 27, sorry, July 26 for opposition counsel. Two weeks then for sir reply would take you to August 9th? That would work. Well, it actually gives us more time than we need, so, one, two. So, August 9th for a sir reply would give us plenty of time. And actually a good idea if there's two financials?
Yeah, if there's...
Do you want submission is when?
Okay, so it's July 7th for Mr. Selver.
Right.
July 26 for Mr. Klein. Sir reply for Mr. Selver, August 9th. Continued hearing, September 5th.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 18, 2016, 4165 B.C., 5801, M. Boye Road, Staten Island.
It's going to get worse. It's going to be chronic. No, it's worse. Sure. And maybe actually hit the light. I like those lights better than these. Hi.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, BSA staff. My name is Glenn Catrona, AIA Catrona Architecture P L L C. I'm representing S T S Realty Corp. On a project at 5801 Amboy Road, Staten Island, New York, proposed Tim Hortons restaurant. I happened to be at the executive session yesterday, listened to your comments loud and clear. Also had some correspondence sent by Ms. Benke during the duration since we met last. I'd like to be able to go through those items one by one as a start, if that's okay? Okay. So, DOT made a comment regarding specific distance between the queuing, the vehicles. I believe the number was 22 foot six. We were showing something different. We had 10 cars queuing. At yesterday's meeting, a question came up if the adjacent residential neighbor would be okay with that. On June 7th, I invited Mr. Ed Lauria to my office. We sat down and we went through a number of different things on the project. I will say that he's absolutely 100% happy. His concern was that the queuing did not shorten and length, that showing 10, seven cars there is fine by him. He was happy that we provided a 10-foot planting buffer.
Sorry, say that again? He was happy, he was?
He was, he was extremely happy that the queuing distance did not change. It just, in fact, was DOT's requirement of putting a specific distance between the cars, which graphically allows us to have seven there. So, chances are, maybe people pull up that way, maybe people won't, maybe there'll be a few cars that'll fit there.
The queuing distance. In other words, that the last car ends in the same place?
The queuing distance from when you enter on-site to when you get to the menu order board to when you get to the menu order pickup window, none of that changed. All we did to this drawing, from the last drawing that we presented to this board, was show seven cars with the DOT required distance between vehicles. And the question yesterday was, you know, would the adjacent residential neighbor have any objections? When we received that correspondence, I invited him in the office, as I said, on June 7th. We went through everything. And again, he was happy that we're providing a 10-foot planting buffer on his adjacent property line. We're also providing an opaque wood fence that he had selected. And he was happy that we relocated the enunciator to the elevation which fronts the adjacent wetlands property, which will not affect him. So, in terms of the neighbor, he's absolutely on board. In fact, his comment when he was leaving my office is, hey, when are you getting this started? So, I'm not sure, but we're optimistic.
I thought you actually did start on some...
Well, we absolutely started on something. As you know, this site has an environmental cleanup. We're in a brownfield cleanup program and, you know, we have some of our experts here who can speak to that.
Okay.
Okay? But yes, indeed, the neighborhood has been looking at a construction fence for the last year or so with all of this environmental mitigation happening behind that fence. At this point, I'm sure they'd love to see this move forward. One of the other concerns was the service time centering around the seven-car queuing here or the queuing of the vehicles. We brought our traffic engineer here. At this point, if it's okay, I know that there were several questions that came up. Service time, you wanted that to be illustrated. Also, a discussion on the 30-second service time that we had put into our discussion of facts and findings. If it's okay, I'll bring our traffic engineer up and maybe he can talk to a few of those points and I'll get back up here. Craig, would you please join us?
I'm Craig Perrigway from Dynamic Traffic, the traffic engineer. I spoke at the last meeting about the site distance. In terms of the 30-second service time, that's the time at the pickup window. That's what's limiting you from exiting the queue. It's not the total time you spend in the drive-through queue, it's just at that window.
So, that's the time when I've ordered, that I move, and I think, and I move up to the window to pay.
Right. You're at the pickup window.
So, I'm at that window for 30 seconds.
Exactly.
That's the 30 seconds.
Right. And that's what's basically limiting the queue from moving forward.
So, I'm waiting for my change, I'm waiting for my stuff, and then I leave. Okay.
But so, your stuff presumably is already there, otherwise, how could it take 30 seconds?
And that's exactly right. In the peak times, the stuff generally is there because they're focusing more attention inside the restaurant on the drive-through at that time. When they see it stacking up, they're monitoring this. And that's when you get those faster service times. You may go at 2:00 in the afternoon and it'll take you three minutes to get your sandwich because they haven't made them yet. But nobody's behind you in the, in the drive-through queue. So, when it's the busiest at the drive-through, those service times are the fastest. And that's what we're looking at, to what, to what extent that queue extends. And that's where that 30-second service time. It was studies done by the I T E that found 30 seconds. Our office has done studies at donut coffee shops, similar thing. And we found a 22-second average time during the morning peak, which is when you're going to see most people using the drive-through here.
So, not being a fast food driver person, I don't actually have experience with how long it means that I would, according to your 30-second theory. If I drive in my car and I'm number seven or number 10, depending on which plan you look at, how long am I standing in the line according to that theory?
Well, if, if everything flowed in an average of 30 seconds, if you were the fourth vehicle, you'd be there for two minutes. If you were the eighth vehicle, for four minutes.
Even though I haven't yet placed my order?
No, you've placed your order.
No, I didn't yet. I didn't drive up yet. I'm number four.
Oh, just waiting.
You may or may not have placed your order depending on where you are in the queue. But the order placing occurs in the queue while you're already there. You're still limited of exiting the queue by front vehicle.
So, in that diagram, car number four is ordering?
Yes.
So, you said 30 seconds is an average. So, what is your range that creates that average?
From, from the research that my firm did, I can tell you I have the spreadsheet here. As little as 13 seconds and up to, say, 40 seconds, 45 seconds. If somebody pays with a credit card, it's fast. They hand the credit card, they swipe it, they hand the food, they're out of there. And if it's, and this is coffee and donut shop, to keep in mind too, it's mostly breakfast sandwiches and coffee and things like that. Some fast food places, like say McDonald's, for example, they have a much more complex menu. You'll see now they have a double, a two-side-by-side order board because it's a little bit more complicated to order. These are a little bit more simplified of a drive-through system. So, that's why you can get those fast service times. And we've known, you can see when somebody uses a credit card, it takes about 10 seconds off.
Do you know what it is? The Tim Hortons on RISPR.
Have you? We didn't do any, we didn't time it there, but we observed a full day. And their queue holds five vehicles. And it never extended beyond during the day that we were there, the days that we were there. So, they never exceeded five.
So, this is another Tim Hortons someplace in an area that you did a study?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have the results of that study? Is that something that actually?
That's what, that's what my traffic study is based on. The traffic, the parking, the amount, the percentage of traffic using the drive-through. It's very consistent with what the I T E standards would have told me, but it's even better because it's local. It's another Tim Hortons in Staten Island.
Okay. So, then maybe to get to the questions that we had yesterday about DOT's request to reduce the queuing to seven cars. So, the kind of the queuing line to seven cars. So, what happens if it ends up building up to be more than that?
Well, that, we're not, we didn't actually reduce the queuing, just the depiction of the vehicles. We had 10 fairly closely spaced vehicles. I'm sure you could fit 12 Priuses and maybe only five Ford F-150s in there. So, it obviously varies based on the vehicle length. Based on research that we've done, that distance between vehicles, it's 20 feet 2 inches on average that we've found. So, you could really fit eight vehicles and that eighth vehicle would be at about this, the edge of this arrow, so you could still process inbound traffic. We're projecting a maximum queue of three to four vehicles.
And, and that's based on that study at the other location?
Based on that study. You would have to get the average service times up over 50 seconds in order to see that queue get to the eighth vehicle and block that. Which, like I said, they monitor this from inside the restaurants and not just Tim Hortons at all, fast food with drive-through establishments. They're monitoring that drive-through queue. When it starts to extend, it's not in their interest to have their driveway blocked or to have people waiting too long. It's supposed to be a convenience, a convenience amenity to the restaurant. They're monitoring that and they focus more attention on the drive-through and moving that queue when it gets to that point. Because what really happens is, people don't back out onto the street for the drive-through. I mean, unless they're giving away free coffee, you're just, you're gonna bypass it. You're gonna say, well, look how long the line is, I'm gonna go someplace else. Because the whole idea is, it's a convenience. Drive-through's a convenience. And waiting in a long queue or extending out into the road eliminates that convenience to me and others.
So, how do they implement whatever those, the DOT said, those site, site management plans to speed it up?
Like I said, it's monitored, there's, there's cameras within the restaurant. They, they track things like service time, how long somebody waits because they want to look at who's a better employee and things like that. So, they track all that stuff in these types of places.
How do they track it?
How does it physically, how does it actually happen? I don't know. I assume it's something that counts the cars, a laser or something.
I think some of it's camera work, too.
But then I'll get more stuff from the, from the counter to the...
A lot of it's augmented. If you see, if you're waiting in one of the drive-throughs and you look in there, you'll see there's cameras on the, on the line.
Right. But you don't really know how it's done. You, this is, I guess it could, right?
But then they, you know, if you're, they do a number of things. They shift staff over or they move you to a parking spot. If you have like a really lengthy order, 20 coffees and 10 toasts.
They'll say, please pull up.
They say, please pull up to that parking spot and we'll bring it out to you when it's done. And then they can keep working the line, the rest of the line while they prepare.
Oh. That's what those parking spots would be used for that are just to the right of the stop?
Well, I mean, they could be open to customers as well. But I think that, that's one of the ideas, is that you can pull forward and they'll bring the food out. McDonald's has, doesn't make a spot for it.
So, where are they please pulling up to if they have an order for 10 people? That's what, that's kind of what I know. So, there you are at the window, you, you just, or actually, it seems like the enunciator would say, oh, this is a huge order. When you get to the window, please pay and then pull up. And then what? Get out of your car and come to the window?
No, they then send somebody out with your completed order.
Yep. I've had, I've been in situations like that happen before.
Okay.
Not in this.
That's called special services, I'll say.
Well, if you're doing a big order.
And that happens more frequently at McDonald's or Taco Bell with a more complex menu, with the coffee, donut shops.
It's more standardized, much limited.
Yeah.
Okay. If others are convinced of that, I'm deferring to the driver of fast food eaters.
DOT's defense. What? DOT's defense. Yeah, that they, that people get out.
They're aware of that, too. Yeah, I remember that one.
Yeah. Okay.
I will say, in my limited experience of drive-through, I have noticed that shifting of staff from the service to the, to the queuing. And there are all these cameras that are placed throughout and they're constantly monitoring how many cars are waiting in line. So, I'm assuming that would be one.
So, we did have some other questions, but maybe those are, does anybody have any other questions on this subject? Okay.
So...
Actually, I, I do have a question.
Please.
The DOT had, had a condition that, that they wanted us to impose, that, that if it goes beyond seven, you know, reservoir spaces in your queue, that you have someone go out and say, oh, you know, monitor, you know, so that you monitor it. I, one of my, one of my sort of reluctance on, at staff level of sort of recommending that is that DOT doesn't, or DOT doesn't enforce that kind of thing. We would make it a condition and of course, it would be something where I guess if somebody observed it and reported to BSA, then we could have a compliance hearing. But I just wanted to make sure that that's something that you guys were, were comfortable having be a condition that you could, you know, should...
Madam Chair, yesterday, you mentioned a site management plan or an operational plan.
Right.
And I don't think that the people that will be operating this restaurant want to see something that's unsuccessful in any respect. Because exactly what we were talking about and Commissioner Utley Brown yesterday was the one who actually said he'll drive by it. When you all broke for lunch, we said, maybe it's a good time for us to take a walk and grab something. And we went to Starbucks. The line was basically touching the door, so we went to Andy's Deli next door.
But you know what? But you know what about that with Starbucks to that point? For Starbucks, people will wait online for 40 minutes to get a coffee. I don't understand it, but they do it, right? So, not everybody goes to Andy's. So...
But we will, you know, we would, we heard you loud and clear yesterday. We'd be happy, we'd be happy to have some sort of an operational understanding of what it would take to make sure that the...
The condition was actually to reach out to DOT.
Say that again?
The condition was to reach out to DOT.
Oh, to reach out to DOT.
To establish a site manager.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which, okay.
We're, we're fine.
Maybe they want to enforce it, I don't know.
No. No, they obviously don't want to enforce it. But so, so, you know, what I, I don't know if we actually have open issues beside, we'll keep talking, but maybe one is that they're, that you, never mind. I'll talk about this later. Let's see how we do.
Well, DOT does want to review the last set of drawings.
Oh, they do? Okay. So, because DOT wants, so then I'm gonna raise this. Maybe what you could do, since we do need to wait for DOT's sign-off, right, is create sort of an, an operational plan that we could refer to in our resolution that talks about what you would do in the event that, what you would, might recommend doing in the event that it exceeds, that the reservoir exceeds seven spaces, how you would manage that site. And then, and then we could say some, a site management plan like that would be reviewed with DOT in the event that, something like that. I don't know. Just so we have something in the record that shows that you considered it.
Yeah, what's, the expectation. That's a good idea, actually.
Right. Because you probably know how you're gonna deal with it. You just have to sit down and write it down or do a diagram or whatever.
We'll go with that. We'd be happy to go with it. So, there was two comments that basically talked about cross-referencing. One drawing, our drawing number eight, mislabeled the height of the fence. The fence is absolutely six foot. Madam Chair, you had discussed the fact that we were putting in a three-foot. We, we modified our drawing. We took a better look yesterday after. So, what we're actually doing is along the frontage, just so that we protect vehicles in the parking area. We're putting a one-foot wall. We're going to face it with stone, nice cap. And what we're doing is, we're putting a three-foot fence, which you commented that we called it an estate fence. It's basically the, the aesthetic of the fence. It's a typical estate-type fence. Each one of the, the ballast rods are actually half inch by half inch. It's very, very transparent. So, without planting there, because again, because of the mitigation of, of the environmental and the capping, we'll have the fence there. It's actually very clear to see through. We don't believe that it would create any sort of, you know...
But DOT needs to be okay with that, too. This is the fence along the perimeter on the frontage.
Look, that's a great point. If DOT wants to comment on that and has any reservations or concerns with that, we'd be happy to look at that at that particular point. Maybe choose something different. But again, if four inches on center, half inch by half inch, they're very delicate. Not a, not something that would hurt any kind of sidelines out there.
Okay.
Okay. So, you know, again, with the, with the operational plan, we have no issue with the operational plan or showing seven car queuing. Our NAB is very happy. You had commented somewhat about the GCL waiver. We did our research and, you know, we feel that it's not a requirement in this particular case.
So again, we'll make clear in our resolution, though, that the GCL waiver has not been granted by the board and it's up to DOB to determine whether one is necessary. Because like we've said a few times, it's not been our experience with even little bitty houses they had to come. So. Okay. Okay, and then there was a, just a correction in the statement of facts that if you could make, because it's a little confusing about the distance of the enunciator, based on the statement of facts, you can look at the drawings, but.
Yeah. Not a problem.
Okay.
We will cross-reference all of those documents and make sure that, you know, we made a number of visions, we've been at this a little bit here at the board, so we'll make sure that we go through that clearly and coordinate everything.
Okay. And then, then the last part was about the, obviously, this whole thing is dependent on you doing this brownfield cleanup, right? So we want to make sure that the cleanup is completed and signed off to DEC satisfaction prior to, I was gonna say, prior to the permitting of the building. I don't know exactly how this is being permitted.
Yeah, is that, I guess my question would be, is that the correct sort of ordering, right?
Because I don't want it to be prior to C of O, because that puts us in the place where you've got a building now standing there and you haven't done the cleanup and thanks a lot, you know?
The notes we had.
Yes, prior foundation permit would be another. Sometimes they won't issue foundation.
We have notes on the plan that it's prior to permit ready.
That was requested at the last hearing and when we resubmitted on the 31st, May 31st, I believe, we added those notes as part of.
And so you guys are all, that's the correct order of statements?
We're absolutely fine with that because it's part of the DEC, you know, process with signing off the brownfield.
That's fine, yes, that's what we want. Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Stephen Barshov, Cyvee Padgett, and Razel. Just want to be clear, Noel, our environmental consultant, can address this if there's any confusion. The building itself is part of the cap for the site. So I'm not sure what you mean by permitting. I think what we had put in or had discussed at a prior meeting was that the environmental cleanup would have to be completed prior to a final certificate of occupancy.
See, that's what I remember, not permit.
Right, that's what I think is appropriate.
So I'm concerned about that. Because by the time you get up to a C of O, you know, damage is done, work hasn't been done, sign-off doesn't occur, right? And you can, lots of buildings exist without a C of O. So they say permit on the drawings, but they don't necessarily need it.
But it's a letter of acceptance from, from DEC.
I think where we are, I think where the concern, Madam Chair, is, is that we can't not do this. In other words, the building itself is part of the cap. So it's not like we could do this and not put the building up. We have to put the building up in order to be able to complete the remediation.
There seems to be several different steps in the brownfield cleanup program. This is, it's all laid out in the plan. There's like steps in the brownfield cleanup program.
Can I ask a question? When you said building is up, is it like the entire height of it or up to the foundation?
That I.
The foundation is part of the cap. So the foundation needs to be installed with the SSDS beneath it before DEC will give us a COC, a sign-off.
Okay, so what if we were to bifurcate so that it's, you get foundation approval prior to DEC, obviously, approval because you can't. And then, but you don't get, you don't apply for the building, the above-grade structure.
Well, that puts our client in a bit of a bind on their business end, because the DEC, once we finish installing the cabin, doing the entire remediation, takes several months before they'll give us a certificate of completion. And they do allow occupancy of a building before they provide a COC, as long as you've met or required.
That's a problem.
But that's actually true, because we have, we have projects that are pending.
Pending COC, you can occupy.
Yeah, yeah, and they're occupied.
But so then we don't have any teeth if they choose not to remediate.
If it's a problem to tax credit or anything.
Well, we learned a lot of things. People do it. That's the incentive, but maybe you say, "I changed my mind," or "You changed ownership," or who knows what.
The final C of O.
But who cares about a final C of O? You can occupy.
Well, the DEC would be able to take action if they don't complete. They don't, they can't go for their credits.
No, it's all, the only thing that's a motivator is the credits.
Which we wouldn't get if we didn't.
No, I understand that, but there's lots of cleanups that never occurred, right?
What have you done so far?
We've pulled the underground storage tents and we've installed the sheet pile container wall.
So do you have a lot of excavation to do?
It's not a large excavation project. It's grading and capping from here on out. And the cap is the parking lot in the building.
So here's my question, though. Doesn't DEC go and inspect after you've installed your capping?
Well, as PE on the project, they rely on me to do inspections. They do show up periodically, but on the final sign-off. So they will come, but I'm the one that's responsible for sign-off.
Okay, so how about if we did something like this? You're a licensed engineer, right?
Yeah.
So, and you wouldn't want to do anything that risks your license, right? So how about we did something like this? That we get a copy, that a copy of the final DEC inspection prior to sign-off is submitted to DOB. And a copy of your affidavit stating that the work has been completed according to the terms of the remediation plan has occurred. So final sign-off, essentially. In fact, maybe, I don't know, a final sign-off, right? And those two things must be presented to DOB prior to you continuing the work on the superstructure.
I have no problem providing you with a sealed document once the remediation is done.
Okay, but it's not just us. So DOB would consider that an open item on their permitting process for the superstructure.
As long as it's not a requirement that DEC provides that sign-off, because they won't do that until the COC is.
Right, but DEC has an inspector go out and the inspector must have to write up a report.
They do not have to do that.
They don't.
I'm the signing PD.
So maybe they never come and inspect whether the remediation.
Sometimes they never come.
So they're relying on your report in signing off on it?
That's crazy, but okay.
It's the truth.
Other states do it that way, too.
Yeah. Okay, so let's do it that way, that you will, that an open item will remain on, on the DOB site, that website, that states that no superstructure permit will be issued until receipt of the sign-off from the engineer, the engineer of record on the remediation. How about that?
Information.
Yeah, that would be our condition.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure that the Department of Buildings has a required item.
It doesn't have a form. They have a lot of, let's say, creative required items. So we can, we can ask DOB to have that be a requirement prior to the superstructure permit. It's not one of the official, but we also see odd things.
There's one other major issue that I think really kind of puts us in a position to complete every step of this process. You know, our clients have gone through a huge financial expense to go through this environmental cleanup and part of it with the DEC brownfield program, and I don't want to speak out of term, is a tax incentive.
Yeah, we know.
So, you know, until they get this signed off, do they realize that tax incentive, which is also something which was built into our financial studies here? I mean, every part of this here will be signed off, but listen, as a licensed professional, we're always signing some part off. I don't think that's a heavy lift for, you know, our engineer here to.
Right. So let's just put it this way. We had an application earlier today where we thought that applicant was gonna go in and do all this work and beautify the site and build a new building and make it a gorgeous new gas station. And four years later, there's nothing in the site as a nuisance, right? Lots can happen in a business world, right? So we understand that your client has an incentive because they want the tax credits, but things happen. And so the only way that we can ensure that the work is done is some kind of condition like this. And since your engineer is willing to do it, I don't see why we shouldn't just do it.
Right. I think, Madam Chair, the only concern that I have is, just like you, trying to figure out who could do what, when, and where, I have a bit of a concern about the practical sequence of events. I don't know what the gap is between putting in a foundation, getting a building permit. I think you, once you start getting a building going, you want to go all the way through. How about this as a protection, which is that in the event that the environmental work is not completed, no drive-through? Okay? So.
Well, in the event of, that the environmental review, our work isn't completed, there's no variance.
No variance.
So that's like, that's just implicit.
Well, but I, but I guess.
But no variance, therefore no building, therefore build a house.
Well, that's right.
So, no, but then you'll come to us and say detrimental reliance on a permit and, you know, and the, all that stuff, right?
No, I don't see, Madam Chair.
No, no, no. So I don't think this is gonna work because it's too late in the story. I actually just quoted a case this morning where the court talked about what happens if you build a structure that turns out to be illegal in the end? And then the city is forced to sort of accept a structure that's not, not right for the neighborhood and can't really be used for any other purpose, right? So you're building a purpose-built structure, right? And then you don't, you don't remediate and then we're stuck with this purpose-built structure that really can't be used for anything else. Right?
No, because we can't build and not remediate. When we put a building up, just the foundations, we will have remediated.
Right!
Okay.
But you actually have to pave the parking lot, too.
I understand.
So, I mean, that may not be done when the foundations are completed.
That is what I'm trying to get at, is that I don't know as a practical matter whether or not, every single thing goes in the sequence, Madam Chair, that you're suggesting. And you're tying the hands of the applicant to not be able to go forward and build. You're saying that if all of the aspects of the, of the capping and everything is not complete, we can't put up a building. I don't know what the contractor is going to say about when you pave the parking lot and when you do this and when you do that. I'm saying, and I don't think that there's much of an issue here, I agree with you guys. The variance is what's valuable here. You're not gonna go and through, you're not gonna pave the parking lot and give up your variance and have a building that's sitting out there unusable for what you sought? The variance for it makes no sense.
It's funny, like, as the environmental consultant said, they have to do some grading and they put in the sheet piling, there's not really a lot of excavation-type remediation to do.
Right.
The excavation, the construction is the remediation.
Right.
So I don't think you could get into a catch-22 that if you build it, it's not remediated.
That's exactly right.
If you build it, it's not remediated.
The building is the remediation. The parking lot and the building is.
The foundation is the remediation of the building.
And the parking lot.
And the parking lot.
And whatever else is involved in capping that contaminated area. So if you don't let, if you let them put in the foundation, but they can't put the parking lot in because it's still a construction, it's not remediated. It's not complete.
Madam Chair, let me just be clear about the foundation here. So this is a one-story building, it's a light building, there's no superstructure whatsoever. It's lightweight framing. It's going to be a four-foot below grade foundation with a slab on grade. Slab on grade is your capping, in addition to the asphalt paving that we're going to have on the balance of the site.
And the, and the notes say that they can't get a permit without a letter of acceptance from DEC.
But I don't know what the letter of acceptance reviews.
They're already accepted.
They already have a letter of acceptance, so they didn't offer anything that they didn't already.
Well, there's, that's just one of the notes.
There were three or four notes. And we've met two or three of you, three or four notes, and the final sign-off is the last one.
Similarly, the landscaping might stay until the end, where you put in your concrete curves, you have to come in and dig out a certain depth, put in clean soil, and then put your landscaping in. That might be one of the last things to do. That's also part of the cap.
The landscaping is part of the cap?
Yes, the two-foot soil. So it's actually, the finished product is the cap.
Wait a minute, I thought the landscaping is off of the contaminated zone.
But it's, the entire site is the BCT site, so the components of the cap are the landscaping, the asphalt, and the building.
Right.
And there's a two-foot soil cap in the landscaped areas.
Okay.
So if it works.
I hate it, but I don't know what else to do. So C of O, conditioned on the C of O. Right? What else? I'm just confused, because we've had other brownfield projects and I don't know that we've ever gone into it with such a suspicion that they were not going to comply. So I'm just wondering why here and now, I'm confused. I guess mostly because everything is hinging on the, on the cost of the cleanup and. But that's the case with other cases that we've had that are even larger projects with, which are hinging, the financials were hinging on the brownfields costs being accurate. And I don't recall, you know, putting them on such, under such a microscope and assuming that they were going to go into this fraudulently and break the law. And it just, that's what I'm getting here and I don't understand why. I really don't. I think they want this project, I think they want this project to be a success. And I don't, I haven't seen any of the players in this project perpetrate a fraud before, before us, so that's why I don't understand.
I think that the, the one sort of difference is that there's, they're more complicated than say, another site where basically they had to excavate all the, the site I'm talking about, they had to take out all the contaminated.
Right.
Before they even started on their building. Here, there's, it's quite more complicated. There's like this series of things that have to happen.
But it's a mandatory.
To me, and I'm not a court member, but to me, having you describe the sequences and stuff was.
And I think to the point of the one that we're thinking of, that site doesn't happen unless the materials are removed because of the depth of excavation required. Here, you don't actually need to do anything. You could just pour asphalt and not, not do it. We've had quite a few cases of different levels of brownfield cleanup and we've also had cases in different stages of cleanup, different types of cases, from gas stations to variances. And we've always taken what they've given us as their, their pledge, that they were going to do that or that they had done that. And we have accepted the procedure that they have always put in place as dictated by other agencies, yes, but we've accepted it without putting it under such a microscope. That's all. So I'm personally confused. Well, we stopped putting it under a microscope because they made their explanation, which I think was helpful. And I think it's, here we are. We can't do anything more before C of O, right? So, and all of our projects are conditioned on C of Os, that you have to conform to the plans and provide a C of O, right? Exactly.
I mean, the variance is actually use-based, so that's, the C of O is use, so you don't get the, you don't get the use without.
Yeah.
And we actually put in another note, so if they don't complete the brownfields voluntary program, they have to come back to DPP.
Yes. Yeah, there are also environmental review books, because we, they didn't have to do the normal DPP review. the normal D.O.P. review because of this, so there's also that, so we invalidate our limits.
Right. Okay. Okay. Are there any speakers on this one? Okay. So we still do have to get something D.O.T. sign off, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's a plan review.
The plans with the seven Q spaces and... They wanted the revision to the EAS because there was confusion of how many parking spaces? It's all in the...
Because we had so many revisions, it may have slipped. We'll make sure, we'll go through it meticulously and resubmit.
That was that, and then the commitment to the...
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. And then, so then the only other one was that you're going to do a, in the event that the queuing exceeds the seven spaces, how will you, how would you propose to manage the site?
Yes. I have, I have that now. We're going to create an operational plan for that.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, we can close. All right. So for a motion to close?
Chair for a letter?
Aye.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair John Doe?
Aye.
Christian Monteses?
Aye.
Christian off the floor?
Aye. Something wrong? Okay.
No, I just thought somebody was saying...
Okay. All right. So I don't know how much time D.O.T. is going to need.
Can we, can we correspond offline and figure out that requirement? Or, I mean, we, we don't need much time.
Standard 30-day.
We, we don't really need much time on our end, so we can, we can turn this around very quickly. We've updated all the drawings. I need to put together an operational plan and just read through my documents and make sure that we're consistent.
Okay. Does August 22nd still have availability? Or the 15th?
The 15th.
Okay. So let's say August 15th, which means when, July 26th submission.
But if you have it sooner, should submit it.
Yeah.
I, I...
To give, to give them more time to review, right?
I'll have it sooner.
Okay. So the operational plan, though, you should submit by July 26th?
Yes.
Okay.
Item number 19?
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Glenn. I'm sorry.
Well, I had to say this, thank you.
Item number 19, 2016, 4166 B.C., 2579, 17...
Good afternoon. Eric Palatnik again. So hopefully we're getting closer. That doesn't look so encouraging, though. We, we attended your review session yesterday, and we heard your comments. And Hiram Rothkrug is here to provide you with his backup data. And we just wanted to clarify something. There was a comment yesterday, I think about the board. The board was a little concerned about the accumulation, and Hiram is going to explain that. But there was a comment that was discussed about property on East 16th Street, which Hiram used as the real survey data. And I think...
14th Street.
Is it on 14th? It's on 14th Street, yeah. I think the board might have been mixing up the two facilities in that application. The, the application was for a new building on 16th, which is going to have the oncology radiation. But the other office is not. The oncology radiation in that matter is currently occurring at Kings Plaza.
2632 East 14th Street?
2632 is out there.
East 14th?
Yes.
That's what it says.
Yes.
So they currently have a medical office there.
Right. That's, that's the data that Mr. Rothkrug used to provide the data. The comment from the board yesterday was that that's an oncology center. It's a radiation and oncology center.
That's one of the things that they do. They're also...
No, they don't. No, that's why I'm trying to clarify. That's, if you recall what they're doing, I know, you've got so many cases, who can keep track of it.
No, no, it's not mixing up cases. I looked up the address.
Right, but, right. But in that job, in that application, we were making an application to build a new building, and we were making the arguments to, to support that, that the new building will include the radi, I forget the right word for it, it's the machine that tests you, or with the oncology machine. And that was the one that we were saying has lower traffic as a result of it. And in your, the comment yesterday was that we're not comparable, because that's a radiation oncology center. But that's not. That's a medical office where all different doctors are located, and the radiation treatment and all that is going to occur at the new building.
Wait a minute. Now I guess I'm really confused. Is this, I am probably confused. So is this, is this the one where it's a related facility?
Yes, it's a related, yes, it's a related facility. And the data we were giving you to support this application was the actual data that you asked us to collect from a real medical office that we got from that application. So we were giving you the data from that.
But it's, but it's a real medical office that is...
It's a real medical office with doctors. Sorry, sir.
So, I'm sorry, because I really am following. There was one that had one application that you have, where the new facility is an extension of the facility a couple of blocks away.
It's providing new, yes, it's providing new services. It's providing an oncology center where you're going to have the actual testing done, that they now do at Kings Plaza. And in that case, the volume of traffic is going to be much lower than the existing office that's there, because it's not patients coming in for medical exams all day long, but rather, once you get diagnosed, unfortunately, with cancer, I think it was, that that's where you're going for your treatment on that. And it has a different flow of traffic. But we used the data, you had asked us to actually pull that site, the 14th Street location, in order to get the data. So Mr. Rothkrug, in this application, you had asked Mr. Rothkrug to use real data. You didn't want him to, to, you know, so he used that data here, and that's the data that was given to you, which is a somewhat comparable facility, and that's why he gave you that data. I had a feeling you were looking at the new building in the other application.
No. And again, I need to, missionaries, let's, let me get there. So we had, we have a case, and I know, you know, the addresses are very similar.
14th, one is on, the existing facility is on 14th Street.
Right.
The new application that's currently in hearings with the board is on 16th Street.
Right.
The existing facility is an existing medical office with, how many doctors in it? Five or six doctors in the existing on 14th?
Yeah. That's what it is.
Six doctors on 14th Street. That's a booming medical practice. Everybody's getting healed and coming there daily. But then when they get diagnosed with the dreaded C-word, then they would have to schlep all the way over to Kings Plaza to get the machine tested. So we were asking to build the building to have the unfortunate folks who are getting diagnosed to have the treatment right near their existing. And we used the data from the existing on 14th to, in that application. And then you had asked us in this application to use a close-by, more analogous site that we've already surveyed. So we went to that data and used that. And then in the meeting yesterday, you had mentioned, in your review session, you had mentioned another property.
Yeah.
At 2792 Ocean Avenue, which I then went and looked at last night, did extensive research on it. That place is a disaster. That place, if that place is operating, then we're going to be a piece of cake compared to that. The thing is, I have pictures of it. It's five stories tall. Everything around it is only two. It has zero parking. And it is laden with, and I have pictures here of it, hopefully I printed them, it's laden with advertisements on it from all the doctors. There must be 30 doctors.
No, I'm not saying it's a model. I'm saying it's identical practice.
It's worse than a model, but it's the, it's, unfortunately, I printed up all the pictures. Hold on. Here they are. I got it. I got it.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, Google only let me print out this, but all these places, because you can see it on Google.
Okay. I, I know what it looks like. I found it on Google.
Yeah, you showed it on Google. You see what I'm talking about. Right, so this is, you guys can share that on Google. So when you look at it on Google, it's, it's a billboard for bad advertising, first of all. The property has more banners on it than the L.I.E. does with, with billboards. And every single banner advertises a medical practice with umpteen doctors. That's before you even get to the nameplate, which is on the front of the building, which itself has probably seven or eight doctors. And then I went onto Google, and I Googled everything like you did, and I started looking at all the different names, and it's like the busiest of the busiest doctors. It's a, a lower clinic is there with five doctors, a sleep and something center is there, with Dr. Leonid Isaacov Pediatrics, dermatology center is there, a dentist is there. So these are all things that are racking in people. I mean, dermatology's racks in, and people don't stop coming. So all I'm trying to suggest is, we've tried like crazy. I know, we know the board hated it, but we've tried like crazy to make you so happy. We're trying to give you everything.
So here's the thing. So now I'm remembering it's a different site that we're talking about.
Right.
The 14th and the 16th Street linked, linked medical thing is a completely different project. That one was a medical office where they have, unfortunately, a lot of cancer patients. They send them to another place that's pretty far away, that's a total drag. And so they're opening it up a new radiation treatment center nearby, and we said, what's your, what's your demand? Obviously, the demand for there is the same as the demand for here, because it's two blocks away, and it's going to be the same patients, right? Not the same. So that's a little practice, that one, where there's very few doctors, as was explained by the, one of the representatives from the medical office who came, I think she was one of the doctors or the owners, and who explained how it worked and so on. It's a very small practice with a very limited amount of patients because of the type of medical practice.
That's at the new facility.
No, at the old facility, too. So everything is...
No, the old facility has a broader, Hiram, here, they have, no, I can clarify for you, they have a broader spectrum of services.
Okay, but it's a small, it's a small building, and they're located in two locations. So they're seeing people in Oz and Queens, and, I mean, they're, they're seeing people in two locations. And I don't see how you compare it to this five-story building. And so the closest equivalent I could find in the immediate walking area was that scary five-story thing.
Right, but just looking at that one...
And why wouldn't this building have the same scary five-story kind of a practice where it's everybody you can think of it? You've got dentists, eye doctors...
But that's, everybody could do everything. I mean, I could walk out onto the street right now, and I could, I could rob every store. But, I, I could. And, and somebody could say, why didn't you make laws to stop him? At a certain point, where, where...
Let's, let's not do that.
No, but...
Let's just say instead, it's an open-for-rent medical arts building, right? So unless you need to take an exam to get into this medical arts building...
Well, no, it's not all medical arts. It's mixed. It's a mixed use. It's mixed, it's half offices, and, and we took out some of the medical...
No, but you don't need to be called ambulatory care to occupy Use Group 6 as medical. Anyone can take a Use Group 6 and open a doctor's office that's called a professional office.
Right, but we'd have to come back to you for an amendment.
No, you wouldn't, because it's not a Use Group 4.
It could become a Use Group 6.
It's a Use Group 6.
We've labeled everything on the plans as Use Group 6 office?
Yeah, actually, the findings are that they have to sort of, it's a, the use is what you, what you see is what you get. It's community, it's an ambulatory care.
Care.
Right, but the plans are marked as Use...
But we're going to stamp the plans with ambulatory.
The plans are marked as Use Group 6 office.
No, I understand that. It's ambulatory care versus Use Group 6 office, right? Use Group 6 office is legally occupied by any professional offices.
We will mark the plans, no medical. We could mark the plans, no medical, and put a note on the C of O.
So then those floors arguably have psychiatrists in them, right? Or, or whatever. So it's not ambulatory care, or...
We have to have one floor as community, not...
Right. We took one floor as community.
Right.
But, but what I'm getting at is...
I thought there were two office floors.
There are.
There are two office floors, but there was a two...
And then it's, two offices is the, the community center space, and then there's the, that we took out to accommodate the parking demand.
But what I'm, but we're not looking at the 18 trip capacity of the offices, because that's, you're using, you're using D.O.T. data for that. We're looking at the reduced capacity for the ambulatory care, the reduced trips for the ambulatory care based on a model of a building that is a very low turnover kind of medical practice.
That's where, with all due respect, Madam Chair, I think you're not correct. We have 34 doctors that are operating out of that building. The low practice that's coming out of that building is...
You're talking about this building?
14th.
No, 14th.
14th Street. The low, what's coming out of 14th Street, the, the 16th Street application is for a small portion of that practice that does radiation and oncology cancer treatment. That's one or two, that's one small portion. That's what we're building the building for, the new building. The existing building has, as Mr. Rothkrug is saying, 34 doctors operating.
No.
34 staff, and how many doctors are operating out of it?
Wait, wait, wait. There is an existing building on the site at 2632 East 14th Street.
Right.
And according to its website, where I could call up right now and make an appointment with a doctor.
Right.
There are five doctors practicing there, and what, and their specialty...
And it's 20, 25 patients. I said 34 before, I meant 34 staff, in addition to the five doctors.
There's staff for five doctors.
It's not a very, it's a busy, it's a busy office, that office. It's a very busy, they're very busy, unfortunately.
Well, so here's the thing.
It's a very busy office.
If you're doing a study where you're going to rely on the materials, and it's not a related kind of a facility, right? You need a little bit more of a, of a model. You need, you know, you can't rely on one facility.
Well, that we give you. We concerned, well, we have others. Since the comment that you made at the review session yesterday, Mr. Rothkrug, I think you went back to look at the other applications that we were talking about yesterday?
Well, that's the chart that I gave you.
So why don't you come up here and speak then and talk about that? Because we went through, we tried to give you more. All I'm trying to, to communicate to the board is we've been at this for five or six months already.
What about the Quinton? Because the project that we...
Yeah, that's what Hiram has.
That's 32, and then Domino Sugar is 43.
Good afternoon, Hiram Rothkrug. The reason why we use the, the 14th Street is, number one, it was, we were allowed to survey that facility. They were very accommodating to us. It was nearby our site. It's a medical office. We're a medical office. And, and that's why we, we felt that it was a comparable use. It's not, they don't have equipment in there. It's people go in there for checkups and, and other things. And we thought that would, would satisfy the board as being something within the vicinity, rather than giving some generic, generic rate. And this, you know what, and I, I showed you that, that table that I passed around before, that there are many variables or many different types of medical office facilities and approved rates that people are using all over the place, so.
So if you were to apply this rate to this.
I, I didn't do that, but I can, I can do an analysis of, of all those, you know, of the, of the Quinton, of the Habermeyer. And I could check it the different.
No, not just of Quinton and of Domino, which is what we did with the other one, right?
Yeah, no, I could, I could do, I could do all three of those and give you another chart to show what, what our, our trips were doing.
Wait, we can, but we're nowhere near ready to, that we did say.
I, I, you know, I do want to say that, for instance, if, if we were going to be a clothing store and you said, Mr. Rothkrug, give us a survey of a clothing store, well, you know, it could be for kids, it could be for babies.
Right, so then you would need to.
Big and tall people, it could be, you know.
Then you'd need to do a sampling. So you could say, I looked at one for kids, I looked at one for adults, I looked at a shoe store and when I got to, I had three or four and then I had, came up with an average, right?
So the other, the other building that you had specified, those doctors and uses are all over the place. It's pediatric, it's laser care, it's.
But this is like twelve thousand square feet. Why couldn't those doctors be all over the place?
I have a question.
No, no, eleven thousand square feet was the last version. What?
So it's eight thousand of medical, of medical space.
No, it, so let's see. It says reduced ambulance for, to eleven thousand four hundred thirteen square feet. Reduce, the project now calls for twenty-nine fifty-five square foot, fourth floor to be used for Use Group Four, non-commercial.
Eight-three-nine-three. Ambulatory, four-two-six-three, commercial, three-oh-six-three, community facility.
So it was reduced even.
I, I, I'm just sensing that we're, we're going at each other and I thought we were at a different point. I thought we had gotten us to the level where we had documented, we had made the changes to the building, we had made the changes to the parking garage.
Oh, here.
We had given you the, the traffic data for three or four different hearings on the number of people and the demand.
Oh, oh, right here.
So that's why we're sort of confused.
No, it's because then when we see other parking studies or when we, you know, we keep getting it, this was a day, there were six reductions in parking on the same day.
Yeah, I know, I had three of them. My head's spinning.
Yeah, so your head's spinning is rather yours, right?
My head's spinning, so I understand where you're coming from.
So then we were trying to study.
But we're trying to make you so happy. We try to give you every single piece of documentation that you could need. We really are. I mean, and I think we've changed the use, we're showing you our good faith, we're, we're willing to restrict the, the approval, put language in so there's no Use Group Six doctors coming in. And we're under your purview. And, and we recognize what got us to this situation and it's never going to happen again.
But you shouldn't be too confused because at the last hearing, I asked for support of the claim of comparability, but there wasn't actually any support, just so it was.
I know, and I yelled at Hiram for that.
Right, so yeah.
A lot.
So it didn't say how many doctors, it didn't say how many staff, it didn't say the configuration, it didn't say what type of facility. We asked all those questions.
We submitted on time.
So, okay. So, and then, you know, for me, I still have huge problems with the configuration of this thing. And I don't know if others do. The last note was, you know, if you provide parking spaces, someone will figure out how to get into them.
But there's not going to be a charge, correct?
There's no charge and listen, we've.
You're free.
It's, it's, if I have my druthers going forward, any applicant that comes to me, I'll make sure they're not building before they're coming to you.
Yeah.
And it's not like this. But it's, it's, from that perspective, I agree with you. But from the perspective of driving in New York City and having been in parking garages everywhere, this is no different than the vast majority of them.
You know, from the site visit, I recall that two abutting buildings are also medical facilities.
Yes, and I don't believe they have any parking.
And they don't have any parking.
There's no parking at all.
Here you're.
Finding some.
Some.
Listen, it's a decent amount of parking, and, and a valet can easily navigate this thing and Frank went up and down with you about the timing.
Easily?
A valet?
No. This is a very talented team of valets.
Valets, it's tight and we understand that you're, you have your concern, if you were to design it, you would have designed it this way, but it's there and, and we're not trying to just shove it down your throat. We, we have redesigned and taken out space. We're trying to accommodate every single request you got, but we're kind of out of our bag of tricks.
Okay, so, I don't know, maybe we can find out a little more about the parking study if you were to run it against these other things. Did you figure it out already?
I, I'll do that, although I'm not going to go out in the hallway to do it.
You're not going to do it in the hallway to do it, okay.
But I mean, I, I could have that to the board within the next couple of days.
Okay. And what about the subject as a car wash curb cut? We never.
Yeah, that's, we have a handout for you, which I probably buried in all of my paperwork here. Always something back and forth. We had his handout, right Jessica? Frank, do you have your handout? Well, I should have it, yes, it should be in my stack of papers, it's somewhere. We did a handout for you, which I misplaced while we were talking. All right, so we didn't have, the handout I lost, but I do have a good memory. So I can just draw it. We had a marking at work. This is our site right here. This is the car wash. We're right next, this is actually us, right here. The car wash curb cut is right here. Frank had prepared a handout, we'll submit it to you. The car wash queues right here and they go in here. They never interfere with us unless they don't want to go to the car wash.
What about us interfering with them?
Us interfering with them? Well, first of all, they're totally illegal. They're not allowed to have.
They have a CFO.
So, so, right, but they don't have a CFO for queuing on the street.
Well, they also don't have a CFO for vacuuming on the side.
Right, they don't have a CFO for any of that. But, so if I was here with them in a variance application, I would have been in the compliance hearing a week ago.
Is there any on, is there any?
But aside from that, yes.
I have a question. Is there any on-street parking along that bend?
Excuse me?
So is there any on-street parking along that bend?
Right here.
And so the queuing of the cars to enter.
I believe the corner is daylighted, but I can confirm that in a second.
Okay. The reason I'm asking that question is so if there's one lane that is already dedicated for on-street parking, the second lane then is being used for queuing of the vehicles entering for car wash, that leaves the remaining moving lane, which would be used for.
Anybody, yeah.
For anybody and for vehicles entering your facility.
Right.
Okay.
So.
So keeping that in mind, how, how would it not be an issue in terms of the way the maneuvering within the car, within the parking facility?
And while you're speaking, I'll look through some of my papers and I might have left behind.
So again, Frank Filicholtz with Stonefield Engineering. This being Avenue Z, this being E Seventeenth Street, again, this is how the queue develops. So it develops away from our property. The other thing we were proposing, and I mentioned it last hearing in April, was that we're also restricting left turns out of the facility. And left turns are really what generate that sad conflict between vehicles. So if you're in the car wash queue and let's say you decide that you don't, you no longer want to deal with the wait and you want to continue north on E Seventeenth, you're not going to be contending with someone who's also trying to make a left turn out of the facility. We're proposing to restrict that left turn with signage and markings.
I'm trying to visualize.
So I'll just build upon this. Do you have the, the driveways marked or?
Neither.
So again, if this is the facility here.
Doesn't work though.
This is dead, huh?
It's not the best driver's mark.
Yeah, it's really bad. Okay, if, if this is the facility here and the parking is in the rear, again, E Seventeenth Street and Avenue Z, you will not be permitted to make the left turn to get back to this traffic. All traffic will be destined to the north.
Okay.
Which will reduce any potential conflicts with the car wash. There's really nothing we could do with that. I mean, they are, they are there, they're existing and they queue, whether it's legal or not, onto the street. But they do so in a fashion that's away from our driveway.
And most of the vehicles coming to this facility will be making right turn, right? You can, they can also make a left turn?
They could also make a left turn. It's a two-way street, so you could make a left turn.
Based on the street view, they're queuing in what would be the park.
Yeah, that's what the aerial is showing, the aerial is passing.
You mean on Avenue Z? Not really.
So they're queuing on the parking lane, not on a moving lane?
Yeah, so as the curb wraps around.
Avenue Z is parked, excuse me if I can't, because the aerial is showing it.
As Commissioner Montanez was just pointing out, on Avenue Z, it looks like there is parking and that they're going around the cars for the line on Avenue Z.
They're in the, the driveway.
Well, that's Avenue Z, but when you turn onto Seventeenth Street.
Okay.
It's showing the cars are hugging the curb.
Yeah, they're hugging, right, yeah.
Okay, all right. So my concern was that it will result in too deep parked vehicles with no movement, but.
But that picture shows you.
Okay. All right, so we're going to need still, are there any speakers on this? So we're going to need still the trip analysis applying Quinton and Domino for the trip rates? And we still, what were we waiting for besides that?
I hate to say it, I think that was it, but I don't want to jinx myself.
I thought we were waiting for one other thing?
I'm usually pretty good at giving you every single list. I've never left anything out yet, even if it might disadvantage.
Yeah, that's true. Well, yes, you did. You didn't get Mr. Rothkrug to answer our questions.
That's a full-time job.
Okay.
And I'm working on it very hard.
Okay.
Very hard.
So you do that.
Thank you for, thank you for giving us the time to appear and to make the case.
So let's see what we could do in terms of getting this on sooner than later.
There's not, I mean, this is a, there's just a chip.
We can give everything back to you in a week.
Yeah, so.
Five days, I'll make Hiram stay tonight. He's going to cancel his Yankees game. Legend seats, you're not going to.
What is, is it twenty-seven? I don't know.
Something eleven?
Yeah. Yeah, how about that? Eleven. Okay.
Hold on, Jessica, you're in town on the eleventh?
I don't know if you're here, but maybe Jessica can come?
On the eleventh?
Are you here? No.
Can we do it on the eighteenth? Is that possible?
I mean, you have other cases on the eleven.
Yeah, but the people that are coming are not the skilled in this issue.
Well, wait a minute.
We have a lease. I can send a lease.
Sure.
But I don't want to send a lease to get into a, I didn't want to send.
Then you can go to the office.
Is she, if.
And I'm also wondering if the, the trip gen sort of comparison is.
Is, is what will, is critical.
Is helpful and supportive and critical.
Yeah.
Do you want to not close it?
No, no, we can, we can, well, yeah, we could not close it. It doesn't really matter. We can vote, right?
Yeah, but I'm just thinking that if it's closed, perhaps Mr. Plank would feel more comfortable sending it.
No, but we can't work like that, so.
Yeah, and I want you to, I want the chair to be comfortable because she's not comfortable to begin with. Should we do July eighteenth? How's that date? I'm sorry, we're just all taking a little bit of a break the first few.
This very strange parking garage meets demand at the very least, right?
Yes, yes, and that's why I wanted to eat, you're comfortable.
Yeah, okay.
How's July eighteenth? It's a great date.
July eighteenth, is that, I mean, it's a very, it's.
We'll be quick, Jessica doesn't talk half as much as me.
Okay, so for, just to make it very easy, just make it very clear what the changes are so we don't have to review stuff that's redundant, right?
Yes, we'll go through everything and we'll make sure all of our plans are clearly labeled.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
So July eighteen with a submission on June twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth, so next week.
Thank you for giving everybody the chance to sneak out of here for a few weeks. That's why our schedules are so tough, so thank you. Thank you.
Item number twenty, twenty sixteen, forty-one, W eight B Z, eleven thirteen, Bond Street, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Michael Silverman, Kramer Levin, on behalf of the applicant, R F R Holding. Based on the board's review session yesterday, it seems like the only open question is compliance with the conditions requested by Community Board Two. And I can confirm that the owner agrees to the conditions, that the building not be used for a restaurant or bar, that there be no event space or public access to the roof, and to the other conditions regarding lighting, landscaping, and the restriction on below-grade selling space.
Okay. To the roof, just so we get this right, so no event space, public access to the roof. Could you just say that again? After the part about the roof, just repeat it because I'm writing it so we get this right or no?
No event space or public access to the roof and to the other conditions regarding lighting, landscaping, and the restriction on below-grade selling space.
Okay. All right. So I don't think we had any other issues with this, right? Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so then I think we've done everything we can, we can close this. So for a motion to, oh, do we have any open issues with Marv? No, okay.
Speaker then?
I already have.
Oh, yeah.
So then for a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Michelle Lee Grant?
Aye.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to grant with a notation as opposed to a condition, I guess. So a notation and a resolution that the owner has agreed to the Community Board's conditions, which include no restaurant or bar or event space on the roof, or public access to the roof, no restaurant or bar, no event space or public access to the roof, and the issues with lighting, landscape, and the restriction of below-grade seller space, which will copy from the Community Board recommendation, which we have, okay? So on that motion, motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Michelle Lee Grant?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number twenty-one, twenty sixteen, forty-one, eighty-one B Z, nineteen eighty-one, East Fourteenth Street, Robola.
Good afternoon, Dara Alvin from the Lot Office of Dara Alvin. We did have somebody attend your executive session yesterday and heard your comments. We also have the architect here with us today, I know you wanted to speak with him as well. First thing I'd like to go over is the front yards because that seemed to be somewhat of a big issue yesterday. There was a statement that all of the front yards along this block are actually twenty feet. And we started researching it. I know we had provided a front yard study, but we did some additional research yesterday. And what I can show you is that actually a lot of the front yards in this block are at ten feet. I'm going to use this, the street scape that we submitted to your board. I'll point to where they are, I'll give you the numbers as well in case you want to pull up the street scape on your screen.
Yeah, just give us a.
Give us a second, we can get this fast, okay? And I'll be able to show you. It's on the, all on the same side of the street as our property, the one that I'm going to be showing you.
You have that in, also in plan?
Yeah, look at twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, sorry. With the attachment on the original lot. He did give us a front yards to me.
Okay, so tell us again, what is it you're saying?
Okay. Looking at this block, this is the side, if you look at it, I know there are two of them, it's the one, the big building on the top left of the page, just make sure we're on the same page.
Oh, that's not on our figure ground study.
Fourteen.
Okay, it's not, it doesn't show up on the figure ground, so, because you don't go that high.
No, I was just trying to, I want to walk you down the block, that's why I was using the street scape, give you a better idea. Vice Chair Chanda, do you have the street scape up? Okay. And I'm holding this one up as well, but obviously you get a better view in your theorem. If you look, this is the site in question, nineteen eighty-one, East Fourteenth Street. The house immediately to the right, nineteen eighty-seven, East Fourteenth Street, is a front yard existing at nine foot, seven and a half inches.
What lot number is that?
Uh, lot number fifty-three. I'll give you lot numbers as I go, if that's easier.
Yeah, because the figure ground is in, oh, it's that little house over there, okay. It says nine foot, seven inch front yard.
Right, nine foot, seven and a half, to be exact, according to the survey that we have.
Right.
And when you come up the lot, also right here, nineteen fifty-seventy, East Fourteenth Street, lot sixty-four.[1547.62] That house was granted a special permit under 8213 for a 10-foot front yard.
Says 12 on the figure ground.
The figure ground may have an error, as I said, we went over all the numbers last night to confirm, the numbers that I'm giving you now are absolutely confirmed. Right here. So it's 1957, that's 10 feet. We pulled up the resolution ourselves, as you see, that's two stories in height, an attic on the building as well, that's a bit set back. Do you see that? This building right here. The second one in from the bottom.
Which one from the...
Second from the bottom.
On the bottom row, second one in from the left. 1957, Lot 71. I'm sorry, Lot 64. When you go to the top row, 1949 East 14th Street, see a very modern structure? That one is also 10 feet, as filed with the Department of Buildings.
What lot number is that?
Lot 68.
Lot 68.
Okay.
When you go two houses over from that, Lot 72, 1941 East 14th Street, also 10 feet, two stories, as filed with the Department of Buildings. You keep going, the next house, 1937 East 14th Street, 10 feet, two stories, I believe, and an attic, as filed at this board and approved under 179 of 14BZ. You go down the block a little further, 1925 East 14th Street, Lot 80, that's also confirmed to DOB, two stories, 10 feet. These are the ones we were able to confirm between yesterday's executive session and today. I'm not going to say they're the only ones, but I think you see there are quite a few, and they were all confirmed either DOB or with a BSA approval. One of which I actually was able to obtain the approved plans since yesterday. So, we do believe that a 10-foot front yard, as proposed, does fit with the character of this block, as it's currently existing. So I apologize if anything on the figure ground study did not perfectly match the information that I am providing you right now, which is definitely accurate.
Yeah. Confusing, because I was looking some... Sorry? Well, I don't know how these figure grounds come up with these numbers, frankly.
Well, some of the numbers I know are pulled off of BSA resolutions. The problem is, the older BSA resolutions don't provide all of the information, and the plans are not as readily accessible as they are now. Now, if I want to confirm something, I can call the board and get a set of approved plans. You can't do that with an approval from 2000.
Well, wait a second. So my comment was that many houses in the row have 20-foot front yards with enclosed porches, so I guess my question is, where did I get that from? Is that from the survey? Like, where was that information from?
I don't know where that information came from, but as you look at the street scape, I think you're seeing exactly what I'm showing you.
No, the survey shows... No. So the survey shows...
House to the right is nine, seven and a half?
No, no. It shows a house to the right is nine, seven and a half to a one-story porch.
Correct. As stated, that's correct.
Okay, and then the next, and then it goes back to somewhere around 20 feet.
Correct.
And the house to the left, ditto, nine foot eight, but it's got a one-story porch that's forward of it. So that, my comment was, the houses adjacent have 20-foot yards with a one-story porch.
It's, but if you look at the block, the entire block comes in and out. As you can see, from just the ones I showed you on the street scape that we've already confirmed, there are a large number of homes on this block that are two stories or two stories in an attic, that are at the 10-foot mark.
But you're...
Not the porch, the actual two-story structure at the 10-foot mark.
But aren't you bringing the entire house to the 10-foot mark?
As it is on those other buildings, the vast majority that I just referenced.
But not, so you're saying that all of those houses...
Look down, let me show you the houses again.
So you're saying that those, whichever recent houses, ignore the front yard, the second floor setback, correct? Yeah, that's what I'm asking about, the second floor setback.
Salvatore Vincenti, I'm the applicant. First of all, I want to apologize for not being here last time, I was doing jury duty, so, which I could not cancel again. But nonetheless, again. Anyway, so this is an off-five zone, which gives you the option of using, actually, the front yard is 10 feet. So, that's why you see so many different homes, which have been filed recently, using that option, so they can get a larger building. And so that's probably going to be the way most of these homes are going to be remodeled. If you look across the street, quite a few of them have been remodeled, also with the same front yard setback. So it's not, yeah, which I've done myself, actually, a couple of them. 1950, 1940, 1954, I believe, was 12 feet. Yeah, and there's one more, I don't remember off the top of my head. So, but I mean, this is off-five zone. It's a 10-foot front yard requirement.
Right. Understood that it's a 10, but as you know, we're looking, we look at neighborhood characters.
I do.
I just wanted to clarify, because you said something when you were sitting down. I said, there, so many of the houses have a second floor setback, right? They're used, they have a 10-foot front yard with a one-story porch.
No, first and second. And then what happens is, in an off-five zone, above 25 feet, you're supposed to, there's a angle that you're supposed to follow.
No, I'm not talking about the zoning, I'm talking about what we're seeing on the block.
Yeah, so most of the new homes that have been filed are two stories, and then the attic is setback.
Okay.
And you can see that from this...
Which is all except one that I referenced, all the others are...
One has a three-story, I'm not sure how that happened, but it's there.
And one is one-story. And then we, by the way, I should mention, we didn't even mention 1969 East 14th Street, that's under construction, I don't call information on that.
So, if you take a look at most of this street scape, most of the homes are almost similar, these two-story and attic, large homes. And so as they've been modified, again, and you're right, most of them had a one-story porch, let's call it, but they've all been modified, the newer homes, to the two-story, to the 10-foot setback line.
Okay. Should we get to the threshold question? That's really the Mr. Salvatore's show.
That's your show, she says now.
The floor is mine.
Yes.
All right.
So explain to us.
Explain to you.
How, where'd the house go?
All right, so basically, what we're doing is this. So, while yes, I'm aware of the 50% and all of that, to... Today, the building department interprets this, and I know I'm saying building department, I realize that, interprets this new building versus alteration, the whole thing, by floor surface area. In other words, if you maintain a certain amount of the surface area, you can still classify to, following the old code, as an alteration.
But you know that the board long ago distanced itself from the DOB standards for what constitutes an alteration, right? There was even a court case about this that entitled the board to distance itself from DOB's interpretation of what constitutes an enlargement versus a new building, right?
But I heard you earlier reference the 50% of the wall, I'm not sure where that came from. That used to be an old TPPN.
Right.
That's where that came, and that was what classified alteration versus new building.
Right.
And years ago, I mean, it was, then you had the, there was many different versions of that, if you maintain most of the foundation, the whole thing. Now the building department even has a new one, an alt-one with new building requirements, which, you know, it's again, open for interpretation. But nonetheless.
But again, TPPN is the buildings department issue versus the board's issue, right?
Gotcha.
So, yeah.
So, I realize that. Okay? And in most cases, we try to save as much as we can. In this particular case, yes, I was trying to do it by floor surface area. And so I kept most of the foundation, where originally it was, with the extension of that one story in the back, and we are keeping the deck. We are, we really are.
What do you mean, you're keeping...
You mean the first floor?
The first floor.
Joists.
First floor joists, yes, and the second floor.
Okay.
And the first floor, which is the ceiling of the cellar, then the second floor, which is the ceiling of the first.
But the walls of the first floor, you're only keeping a portion on the north side?
North side, yes.
North, yeah.
So it will be temporarily braced, that's correct, the other side, as we remove the wall, and then we will support them accordingly.
So here's my question.
Sure.
Just like we had a conversation earlier, which I know you were here to see, why can't you keep a little more of the opposing wall on the south side? And then, there isn't any question that you've got an existing building that you're enlarging? I'm not saying you keep the entirety of that wall, I'm saying keep a section of that wall, and then, you know? And then, it's, then there's no question that you're not removing the entirety of the building, because right now you've got second floor floor joists.
I don't think it's on.
Oh, might be your phone. No?
Right, and then you have the attic floor joists with no second floor walls.
Okay. But the attic, if you take a look at the attic floor joists...
It's the whole attic floor?
Yeah, crosshatched the other way, we actually removed those. I know in the section, it shows that.
They're crosshatched the other way?
What's that?
Yeah, the...
Oh, you mean, you're not keeping the second...
Right, I'm not keeping the ceiling of the attic.
But it's shown...
In my section, yes.
I'm sorry.
It's shown in your section.
Say that again?
I'm sorry, I'm confused.
I have to fix that, I'm aware of that. I'm sorry, I could not do that.
That was an error, he's not keeping the attic floor joists.
Oh.
Or the third floor.
The sky hooks? I'm not holding it up, yeah.
Yeah, we did talk about sky hooks.
Yes.
Maybe not in this context, or we did. It was maybe in this context. Okay. So, so here we are, though, so little of either the first or the second floor retained. Where's, where's my existing building?
Well, the foundation is there, the one wall on the north side.
No, but the foundation is how it would account to make for...
I hear you, look, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
I don't know how much, you know, if this was a new building, you could go as wide as 27 feet. I understand what you're saying, I hear you, and I'm not quite sure how I could probably redesign this, unless I make it smaller.
You know, the rear yard is existing at, what, 20, 23 feet?
I'm sorry?
Have a current rear yard of 23 feet.
Yes.
I don't see the point of the three-foot enlargement, to tell you the truth.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go, that would be some existing wall.
That would be a whole another wall there in the back.
On the first floor, I can do that, yeah.
Right.
I could probably work that out, yes.
And then on the second floor, you have this bump out, which I don't really...
You're talking about the north side?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, if you look at the second floor plan, you have a stairway that comes up to a hallway, which leads into another corridor. I don't understand the need for those two corridors.
So I can explain that. So that, it's not really another corridor, what that is, is a little foyer, which is like the master suite, and from there, you can go into the bedroom, into the bathroom, and into an office area, which this gentleman particularly works overseas at night, so that's what he uses at night. So, in order to kind of give his wife a little bit more privacy, that's why we created that hallway. It's a design element, that's really what it is. And it's a little bit more privacy.
I think, I think from what you're hearing from us, is, there is a way to...
Accomplish this.
Accomplish the goal that you identified, and still be able to reduce that floor plate on the second floor by eliminating on the south side. I think it's feasible. You are the designer.
On the south side or the north side?
On the, on the north side, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, I meant north side.
Yeah.
North side, I mean, while also shaving that three feet from the rear, all the way on the first floor and on the second floor.
On the third floor, I think it makes more of a difference. On the second floor, well, I guess I can't, can't leave her.
Well, you have, you have a...
I could take a little bit here and there, I could do that.
I mean, the bathroom that's attached to the building, to the bedroom on the south side, that's pretty generous, that, once you tighten that one, the bedroom on the south side, you can still retain that dimension, and the, and then if you tighten up a little bit of the closet and the office space and the master suite, I think there is room for it.
Okay.
Those are just...
Yeah, those are, you know...
Just suggestions, but you, I think it's possible, you can still retain the, your functional objectives and achieve that.
I could certainly look at that, yes. I'll have to discuss with my clients, but certainly I can look at it.
Okay. And then, the other thing was, we had asked before for a rendering, so that you could establish that the massing of the house fits within the context. The rendering, if you don't already have it, I think you already received it before, you've done it?
You've done it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't have enough time here.
Ah, okay, good.
That's okay, that's okay, we'll check, we'll pass it around, don't worry.
So, no, just to understand, though, which is the house, is this the subject house? So, so in terms of how the rendering works, just so you know, now what you've done in terms of this rendering, is the house itself is the most prominent thing in the block, you're trying to sell the project, that it fits within the character of the neighborhood, right? So you need to pull back a little, maybe you did that?
So...
Yeah, there you go.
The only reason why I did this...
Yeah, this is better.
The only reason why I showed this is to, because I took the picture showing, like, basically, I'm in line with this house and the house next door.
Oh, I see.
This one, yeah.
So, I figured that gave me the best perspective, I couldn't get that on Google, certainly, because there's trees everywhere, but when I took the picture, I stood at a place where I could almost see the lineup of my neighbors.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I understand why you did this.
And so, I'm the first picture that you see, and that's why it's all large.
Okay. You did this on CAD?
No.
No?
This is free hand.
No way. Okay.
And we will use the template, by the way.
You will use it.
We will use the template on every job.
Yeah, it's really helpful, because it tells a real story, those ridiculous street scape flattened things out with photographs that tell the story of life.
Do you no longer want the street scape?
I think, you know, those are much more useful, taking further back, you know, not so close up to the building, but where you're standing, where you get a good perspective, is much more useful than rows of little houses that are all flattened, I think, really. I mean, the advantage to the street scape is only as your data supplier, like how tall it is, how, whatever it is, you know, you can use that as a, as a data supplier, but you can also use figure ground as a data supplier. So. Um, what else? If I remember, no? Okay. You had a comment about the distance on the existing buildings, but I'm not sure what we can do about that. So I'd say more like working on the form of the existing house, may respond to a lot of concerns about the distance between buildings. You know, one of the, sort of the themes that I'm concerned about with the special permit, you all know that I have a lot of trouble with the special permit for a lot of reasons, but one of them is the issue about fire spread. And the reason that the zoning resolution requires distance between buildings is to avoid the fire from leaping from one to the next. So when we have these special permits that encourage such a close proximity to, between the buildings, and no special requirements for how those are, what the materials are to prevent fire spread, it's really concerning. So, you know, it's a theme.
You'll be happy to know that we will have a sprinkler in the entire house.
Okay, that's very good to know, okay. Could you make, make a note?
It's actually a requirement these days.
We, we did for a little while, but I think it should be a requirement, yeah. So when you do the sprinklering, you know, in, in manufacturing buildings, where you have to have those shutters, for example, the option is a shutter, or a three-hour separation, or a sprinkler head at the, at the openings. You know, the, the building code requirement for this maximum size of openings on a lot line wall, and an option is to provide sprinkler heads right at the windows?
Yeah.
Do you do that when you sprinkler the house?
We do not. On a single-family residence, that is not one of the requirement. Clearly, this is an existing frame building, which had zero sprinklers.
Right.
But we will have throughout the whole house. And basically, the requirements in that is, has to be seven and a half feet from a wall of 15 between the heads.
So there isn't anything when you're particularly, because, of course, those rules assume compliance with distance between buildings, because that's in the building code.
Correct, I understand that.
Right.
But here you have, what do I have, three feet? Two foot six. And the adjacent neighbor is almost five feet away. So, if, if I were to do a new building on the adjacent neighbor, all I would have to leave is a total of 13 feet, and I could choose where I leave my five feet, there is no requirement for eight feet across the common lot line.
No, not inside.
So, you know, coincidentally, I'm actually doing the adjacent building to, I guess, the north side, and we are, you know, setting back a little bit.
Who's getting the bill first?
Well, this person who's here first, and the other person's not even here yet. They'll be coming here also, before you applaud.
All right, well, we have to work more on that subject. Okay, all right, so I think, are there any speakers on this? No, because everybody here is a member of the bar? So, okay. So you have your direction on what needs to be done, yes? Okay, so, what do we think?
And I could do it rather quickly, you know that.
So you know where we are in terms of the hearing schedule? Are we still in August?
Yes.
Tell them what August 22nd is. All right, so August 22nd with a submission on August 2nd.
Is there any way to do the sooner thing, is, is that you share with you, you know that you will follow directions, as you always have?
It's just that our... What? No. I mean, the only other thing, I don't know how many are on for the 15.
17.
Oh, okay, we could do 15, that's the best we can offer, which is... What? You'll take, we'll take, August 15th with a July 26 submission.
Oh, there was something you just put on?
Yeah, he just put a bit of it on, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New cases, item number one, 1015BZ, 148 Lafayette Street, Manhattan.
It's been a long day.
It's been a while. I'm here, Ariel Holzer for Goldman Harris. I'm here, we're requesting postponement so we can comply with the hearing notice requirements for this, this hearing. In my defense, this was not my case, but I am here, I am here as the sacrificial lamb.
Oh, okay. Well, you can bring back to their office, "Look what happens when you don't give notice", hear that, everybody in the room? So now, there we are, stuck with the earliest we can put you on is August 22nd. So, there we go. And 20 days before, that's only for, unfortunately, a PCE, which suffers now because of that,
Item number two, 2016 4224 BZ, 1869 East 21st Street. I was gonna try and put Todd in, get rid of him. Want to get rid of Todd?
Yeah, let's get Todd a break. It's a PCE.
Come on, take a little-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, come, come, come. Sure, Todd, you like it. Twenty, item number four, 2016 4470 BZ, 140 Broadway, Manhattan. I think we, we didn't have much on.
No, just a few things. Uh, good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant. So from review session, I think we're two-
Wait, 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 just to make sure. You did submit proof of notice of hearing yesterday, right?
Yes, it was submitted and rec, I forwarded to-
Okay, I need to make note of the proof of notice of hearing at every hearing, because others are watching now.
Nope, I understand. It was actually submitted in May, I think.
Oh, okay.
To submit, it was just missed.
It just didn't show up in the-
It's in a different service.
Proof of service, okay. Well, I looked everywhere and I couldn't find it. That's, when I'm looking in the folders, I open everything and I couldn't find it, so wherever it was.
I'm happy to send it as many times as-
Okay. I just need to make sure that before every-
Noted.
-new hearing, we've got proof of notice, both things. Proof of initial service, proof of update service, and proof of hearing service.
Got it. Um, so to the issues that we discussed in review session, uh, I'll just start with signage, just to clarify. Sign analysis does say zero square feet, because there is no exterior signage proposed, there are no window decals proposed, much as is shown on the landmark crew plans. There's this amber glass that they want to continue. It's a nice building, well-known building. The only sign that's proposed is going to be on a soffit afashia that's approximately three feet removed, and it's like a fifteen to twenty square foot sign, but it's within the building. You're only going to be able to see it either, once you get inside, or you get right up to the glass, crunch at this particular location. It's relocating from another area downtown, and also they expect that there's going to be enough traffic that people are going to find this particular sign. So, just to clarify, that's what's going on with signage.
And these are, I guess, crunch aficionados, so they already know where it is.
Yes, they'll, they'll be enough there. Um, with respect to the noise, or sound attenuation, um, first, to clarify, the term NIC, which I learned, stands for noise insulation class, and it's very comparable to sound transmission class. And I was, I learned a lot about this. It's more for when you're actually in the field, as opposed to materials which are in the laboratory, STC. They use NIC when they're actually more out in the field being tested. So, that's what those figures refer to. The attenuation plan that we provided-
Wait, wait, wait.
Sorry, go ahead.
So NIC seventy-six to level A storage base is good?
Well, clarification. We, we did provide that plan. I have here, which I'm going to pass up, the actual acoustic study, to which that diagram was included. I'll pass this up. There's copies. Uh, the last page is actually the acoustic sheet. I apologize, I'm not sure why the study wasn't included with the plan when it was submitted, but the six-page report from Longman Lindsay, uh, which identified what they determined would be the required attenuation requirements, corresponds to these figures that are on the plans. And the most, uh, the latest proposed plan set actually does make attenuation requirements that do match up to this. Just to clarify also, above and beyond the study, this is in the sub-seller. The majority of the activity space is either underneath existing bank vault, or storage space, or a mailroom. There's a small area in the center that's underneath, but it says BBH ground floor offices. And they designed this facility to make the lowest impact activity to be the one that was located under the BBH office. To the left of the, the plan, which is where the spinning studio and the group fitness is, is actually where the bank vault is. So, it's, goes into a bank vault, and it goes up to the ground floor. That's why I think there was discussion about why there's no box in a box proposed here, because it's-
Do you have it under a box?
Yes, it's actually under a box. But, uh, they recommended putting in, I think, the, the gypsum board. I think it's, the recommendation is listed, uh, let me see if I can find page. Recommendations start, um, on page three, uh, under three point O recommendations. And they, they speak to gypsum board being installed, um, and that's what's proposed, that's what's shown on the proposed plan. And the other areas, uh, the two and a half or two-inch rubber mat, Flytech is the company they're using, uh, it's just a, a type of rubber flooring, is what's installed in those other areas. The one thing I do want to note about this particular acoustic report, just to clarify, cause I know it's been an issue before the board, uh, there's a reference in this report, which was done in December 2016, about CrossFit activities. There are no CrossFit activities proposed for this site. And that would be, when you look at the plan, the far right, it is just going to be a general exercise area. Uh, there may be some weights there, but it's not going to be the, let's toss bar bells that CrossFit does. That said, the bar bells that drop there, uh, they determined that a two and a half inch rubber mat would be sufficient to, um, eliminate all noise and vibration up at the top level. And in the mailroom, they, uh, no, no noise. There, I also, though, they may hear a little vibration, is what the report was. So anyway, I wanted to submit this. I apologize if the report wasn't included with the plan, but this is the report. We will submit this to the record. It's not been submitted, but it's submitted tomorrow to the record.
Consider it submitted. It's submitted. I'm holding it in my hand.
Okay.
For the record, it's submitted, right?
Okay.
Stamp.
I'll take the stamp.
Yeah, okay. And then you'll submit it electronically, so it goes into the PD.
We'll submit it electronically, also.
It's a submit.
All right. I don't know if there were any other questions besides the signage or the landmark approvals, community board. We went back a second time. Their main concern was they just didn't want signage. They're not getting signage.
Right, okay. Now, I think that responded to all the issues, right?
Yes.
And there are no speakers, so we can close this.
Chair pro-motor?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Chair pro-motor?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
And Officer Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not last, appreciate it.
Item number two, 2016 4224 BZ, 1869 East 21st Street, Brooklyn. Thanks for waiting.
No problem. Thank you. Lira Altman from the office, and Gara J Altman. Okay, so just before we start, cause now we know notice is a theme here- I was just gonna say, you got a copy of my notice yesterday, I assume. Yes. I apologize for failing to send in the letter, but of course, I did not fail to do the notification. Okay, great. That's important, and in future, you want to make sure that the notice is in the folder. I work very hard to make sure that those notices always go out on time. Okay, but that you submit a copy to us as soon as you've done that, okay? That I do need to get better during my apologies. Yeah, you better get better, okay. Uh, I heard that there was a comment that two people expressed concerns, and I, I just wanted to inquire for your board if I can get a copy of those letters, because comments seem rather unusual for homes. If you could, I'd appreciate that. So these, this was clearly two immediate neighbors who would be directly affected by this, and they're- On loading and parking, I thought was a very unusual comment for a single-family home. Well, I think by loading, they probably meant baby carriages and bags from grocery store, right? And maybe, uh- I can only imagine. I never referred to my neighbors loading in their driveway. I'd be very curious to know. Maybe if you, yeah, never mind. Okay. Um, and they're concerned about, like, I, I don't know what the vegetation concern is. It could be their construction will damage- Not quite sure of that either. As I said, it was an unusual set of comments for a single-family home. I, I think that some of it is concern about construction, like what the damage to vegetation will be during construction, that kind of stuff, right? Um, or maybe even how plants will grow in the backyard. Though, no, they didn't, they weren't specific. But, um, obviously, take a look. We would like to get a copy. Of course, we do like to make sure that we have a nice relationship with our neighbors. Yes. As best as possible. So outreach would be useful. We'll speak to the neighbors, that's not a problem. Uh, regarding the lot coverage, I wasn't sure if there was a problem or not a problem, cause you said that everything ranged from twenty to fifty, and we were at forty-five. No, I was saying that you got a range. So the mid-high forties is typical, I said? The proposed is forty-five. Right, and that seemed to be not an issue. I just wanted to confirm that. Okay, the FAR again- Is a little on the high side. There's a point nine eight six houses to the north. There's a BS approval of three houses in behind on the south. It's at a point nine nine. Yeah. So there are a number in the area that fall within the range up to about a point nine nine. But the more typical is in the point seven five. But again, I don't believe that you perceive FAR as long as the massing doesn't look like big FAR, so, you know, we'll keep going with the discussion about that. And as you said, we're not requesting an attic on this building. I should point out, there's no habitable attic. I know that was a question that seems to come up repeatedly on the shop. We haven't provided an attic plan, cause there is none. There are no stairs, you are correct, Vice Chair. So it's just not a usable space. It's just a two-story building. Okay. Uh, wanna make sure we're covering all the little things.
Well, there was a question about the perimeter wall height. Why, why the three inches?
Uh, well, it's three inches above what's permitted. It's not three-inch increase.
Well, you know, I looked at the survey.
Correct.
And you show bottom of eaves for the adjacent homes, but you don't show their street wall, the base elevation. So, I don't know how you calculated those perimeter walls.
That would be taken off of the main survey. It has those exact numbers on it.
It doesn't have the elevations for the adjacent homes.
Well, it did. I thought it did as well. I will-
And even the elevations for this particular home, on the survey, are not really legible.
Okay, so we'll clarify the survey. You can do that.
But I didn't, uh, I wasn't able to calculate the perimeter wall heights of the adjacent homes from the information you gave us on the survey.
So you want us to clarify and show the calculations for the adjacent wall heights? Chris?
Yeah.
You can do that. We've already done it. We may not be showing you the math, but we'll have to do so.
I'm looking at the survey now. I don't see any, well, elevations on the adjacent properties.
Notice of comments.
I see some front property line elevations. I don't know if you used that. I, I don't know what you used, really.
Let's see, like, both survey quickly.
Then you used the soffit, which is the bottom of the eaves.
Bottom of the eaves, correct. We'll look into it. I'm looking at the survey. We'll look into it. We'll make sure it's clear. We'll make sure we provide calculations for you, no problem. How do I see what you're saying? Soffit elevation, thirty-nine, seven, thirty-nine, six. Now, another question that came up was the second floor setback on the, for the front yard. If you look at the submitted streetscape on this one as well, what you're gonna see is a number of the homes in the social block actually don't have a setback at the second floor. Some of the addresses are 2102 Quentin, 1837 East 21st, and 1845 East 21st. Those are ones that don't provide any setback. But this building doesn't provide no setback. So, we're actually providing a setback between the first and the second floors. It's just a six-foot setback, less than what is currently existing, but certainly a significant enough setback that when you look at the block, it'll have the appearance of a setback. I know in the past, we had a case, I believe Vice Chair Chanda, you were the one who commented on seventeen forty-four, that, seventy forty-four? Or it was eleven seventy-nine, that a two-foot setback wasn't quite enough. You didn't get the feel, and you asked us to set it back a little further.
Right.
On this one, there's a six-foot setback, which is significant. It's much better.
Yes.
But, um, but again, I think the reason that I asked for the rendering, because that tells the story very clearly. Right, unfortunately, Sal couldn't do both overnight. No, no, I'm not sick. And anyways, it's a new application, so there's work to be done, right? But so, but in this context, you see all these little houses that have setbacks, so you want to see how does this house with a different setback quotient sort of work within that room. I'm sure Sal can do that. He's so beautifully-
We know he can do it, cause we've seen it.
As a matter of fact, I know you have a couple coffees. If you don't mind, we're gonna take those and we'll formally submit those to your board as well.
Right.
While we're at it. Okay. So, those were the little things. Those were all- Not all little things, but- There's some, it was, the only other thing, I think, was the enlargement versus building, which I'm gonna bring up Sal for. Yeah. But were there any other issues other than that? I believe I- Let's see, there was also the rear yard, which I think diagonally was the height. Oh, so just to clarify for you to get us that information, the house diagonally to the rear is shown with a seventeen-foot rear yard, so what's the height? It's actually a twenty-foot rear yard. There's an error, and I found out from a very important architect who actually made that building. Okay, so then you know the height. This building to my left is going to get as a copy of the approved plan. Okay, so then, also, there's, there's a twenty-three and a twenty-seven foot rear yard, two houses to the south, so if you could find out the height of those and tell us. And, um, then there was this photo number seven, that is two houses away, that shows a house projecting forward. That may be that it's compared to- Yes, that is, has a thirty-one foot rear yard. Yeah, okay. Why it looks like it's sticking out so far is because the other ones have very large rear yards, approximately forty-five feet each of them. So those are quite, quite large rear yards in between our home and that home. Okay. Okay.
Salva Tuvin Santi, I'm the applicant. I'm the architect, actually, for the job.
Who are they?
So, in this case, we are keeping, I think, quite a bit of wall, more than fifty percent, certainly at the first floor.
Okay, so, sorry, let me get there. So, first- Okay, so at the first floor, you are keeping, at the first floor, so the wall and the return, yeah, that would be an ideal version for the other project, right?
Okay.
Where it goes down there, returns, and then you've got a lot of wall. But, so what happened on the second floor?
Well, we have the north wall.
So, oh, I see the second floor, that's the front. And that's because you're pulling forward on the, what's happening on the front?
Yes, we're coming, we're projecting forward four feet.
Cause the, actually, your drawings don't have a hatching on the second floor, though that's the reason. It looked like you weren't keeping anything on the second floor.
No, 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 wait. It doesn't have a hatching, because originally, the, um, building wall was further back. So now we're projecting out, so we're counting that as floor area. I mean, there was always a, a ceiling over the first floor, so I could hatch that, if you will. If, if we're talking about deck, or we're talking about wall?
We're talking about deck.
Deck is there.
We're talking about wall and deck.
Okay, so the deck extends all the way to the one-story extension, which protrudes even more to the nine-foot, uh, front yard.
To the one-story-
You mean, keeping the second floor deck?
I'm sorry? Yeah.
It's not shown, no.
On the, again, on the section. So, we are shifting it up a little bit.
Oh, on the second section it's shown.
No, it's not shown on the section either.
No, it looks like you're taking away the whole second floor.
Right.
The only thing you're keeping is the first floor deck and a wall.
So, no.
So-
I am keeping the second floor wall also on the north side. And what I am doing is, because they want a little taller ceiling on the first floor, we're shifting the deck up.
You're shifting it up?
Yes.
That's not the same as tearing it down?
We are shifting-
You're jacking it up.
We're jacking it up.
Is this a balloon frame house?
I believe it is, yes. I will, I will confirm that.
So then, a balloon frame house, where you can maintain the existing wall and raise the joists?
Absolutely. We are, and we'll just put a new ledger board.
So, that's, I think that's acceptable, cause it's existing floor joists that you're just jacking up a few inches, right?
Yes, six inches, basically.
Is that believable?
To get a nine-foot ceiling on a first floor.
Commissioner Montanez?
Oh, well, um, I always thought it was dangerous to remove the floors on a balloon frame house, cause you're like removing what's keeping the structure together.
Well, I'm removing one side, the south side, anyway, the wall. It has to be framed, yeah. I mean, you can't just remove everything and just basically, okay, let me remove all the floor joists and then put them a little higher. You have to do it one, two at a time, and I think it's preferably safe.
Or you do it like underpinning, you remove a couple and you-
Right, well, underpinning is totally different.
No, no, what I mean to say is you only, with underpinning-
You don't do it all at one time.
You cut a little area, and then you fill it in, and then you do the next little area, or alternate ones.
Or somewhere else, alternate, right.
Yeah, right.
So you keep the wall supported.
Well, in this case, you could actually do one joist after the other, however, you can't do them all. You know, you can't take out twenty and do twenty at one time. You would probably take out maybe two or three, put those back up, higher, and then do the next two or three. So that way, the structure of the house would not be jeopardized, or at least of that wall.
Okay, so-
Okay, yeah.
If that's actually what's gonna happen, the drawings show demolition. So you need to give us a clear kind of construction diagram that shows that you're going to be maintaining the second floor joists, but you're just going to be lifting them and giving instructions about like how that's done, okay? and giving instructions about like how that's done, okay?
You want me to give you instructions on how to...
We want to be able to have the...
A description?
Not instructions. What?
A description.
A description.
A description, yeah, okay. I can do that. And I can show where the existing was, and I can dot in and say, okay, this is where it's going to be raised to.
Yeah, but it's going to be existing joists to be raised on balloon framing, da-da-da?
I can do that.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we want that to be very clear, that that's a kind of, it's not really an exception. It's really the idea of keeping the existing structure, but you're just increasing the height of the floor height. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Sure.
And obviously, the notation on the section and on the plans need to be changed. So hatch the second floor on the plan, the second floor plan. Hatch that floor, the deck.
Okay.
As remaining, but with a note that says joists to be raised by X inches. And then on the section, ditto.
It'll be more clear on the section. Absolutely.
But, right. But, but you got that, that it should be hatched also on the second floor plan.
And I'm going to also hatch the, the front portion, so that you see that whole, that whole deck is being retained.
Okay. 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 Good. What else? I don't know if we had issues with the height of the building. Well, it was only mostly about the perimeter wall issue. I guess my question was... What was my question? Hold on just a second. Looking at, on coverage, front yard, what is the rear yard? No. I guess I didn't have any issues with that.
I think my question was regarding the attic.
And that was about habitable space?
And the habitable space and the height of it.
So that's not a problem. I can even lower the attic. I don't have to make it as high. Probably what they will put in the attic, the only thing they will do up there is put an air-conditioning air handler to, you know, central air. And that will probably, we will probably have a pull-down ladder.
Yes.
But certainly, it's not meant for habitable use. Otherwise, we would have shown it, I mean, as in every other of my plans. So, but I can lower a little bit. I just wanted to give the person who services the air-conditioning unit some room to move. And it's only, I mean, the highest one, it's obviously at the middle of the house.
Yeah.
You also mentioned something about removing the roof. Clearly, we're removing the roof, because now the width of the house is much wider.
Okay. Well, you'd be surprised how many people have told us they're not removing the roof, so...
What's that?
You'd be surprised to hear how many people have told us they're not moving, removing the roof, so... Okay, I think, though, in terms of height, your rendering, when you do that, will speak to the height, what's the correct massing and everything like that.
Yeah.
Adjusted accordingly if it seems to be telling you that the massing isn't working.
Not a problem.
Okay, but I didn't see that the height of the building...
Yeah, I think from a neighborhood context point of view, it's not an issue. My question was just the, the height of the attic and if it's...
Yeah.
Yep.
Because it's really, it's a thirty-two feet. They're going up from thirty to thirty-two. It's not the...
Yeah, it's not much.
This is actually a two-story only.
Yeah, right. It's a two-story, right. So that's in terms of the height of the attic also, because thirty-two is to the peak of a two-story home with an unoccupiable attic. And there is a point where it gets silly-looking if you don't have enough of a peak. So in other words...
Right, the minimum pitch is like three and a half to twelve tiny shingles for pitch roof. So we'll try to lower it down a few, a little bit more and, and still, but I want to make sure it's safe.
Right.
At the same time.
Okay, great. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
So, there are no speakers. So let's do this again with our schedule.
You know what I'm going to ask?
I know what you're going to ask.
Would it be possible to keep it on the same calendar as the other one? You know I had to ask the question.
Which was the...
That was the fifteen.
Eight fifteen. As long as Sal is already going to be standing here on the fifteen from ten AM on, you know?
That'd be the last thing we ask.
Okay, so the fifteen, same schedule. Twenty-sixth of July submission.
Item number three, twenty sixteen, forty-three oh-one B.C., one thirty-six Oxford Street, Brooklyn.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Elise Fullader, on behalf of Eric Palatnick, P.C. We attended review session yesterday. I would like to note that one thirty-six Oxford received a variance in nineteen eighty-five, which was thirty-two years ago, and the home was issued a certificate of occupancy. The applicant who purchased the property in two thousand and sixteen now seeks a special permit under seventy-three six twenty-two.
And what happens to the variance?
Well, we can show that they met all the requirements, as you asked, like smoke detectors and...
No, no, so I don't know if maybe you didn't understand what we were getting at yesterday. The confusion is, if you have a house with a variance, you know, a variance is based on the concept of it's the minimum relief necessary to, you know, and all that stuff, right?
Yeah.
So, according to that, you're done, because you proved way back then that that was the house that you needed to be viable. So now, coming with a special permit, then that sort of interfering with the, just let me finish the... Interfering with the whole concept of the variance. And not only that, the variance exists, so it would need to be amended.
Yeah.
It's kind of confusing. So what I'm trying to understand, because this actually wasn't sort of dealt with in the materials, was if zoning has changed, and now there's a special permit that it didn't exist in nineteen eighty-five when the variance was issued, does this special permit obviate the need for the variance totally? Like, if you were to just say, I don't have a variance anymore, and I'm legalizing this building, could the building with waivers under the special permit be a legal building, assuming that the side yard incursions were existing non-complying conditions in nineteen sixty-one? Right? So the variance resolution says...
Yeah.
So, but I don't know, because we didn't have, I don't know. But anyway, the variance resolution says that this was a vertical enlargement of an existing building with existing non-complying side yards. So I don't know what they meant by that. Like, I don't know if it was existing pre-sixty-one non-complying side yards. I don't know anything. But that's the part that's very confusing. Like, unless we're abandoning the variance and we're kind of legalizing this building with a special permit, I'm not sure how you make a case for a variance where the minimum relief was already granted way back in nineteen eighty-five.
And could we explain doing a special permit and not using the variance anymore, or...
Yeah, so you could do the special permit.
Yeah.
So what you need to do is go back into the history of the approvals of the building and find out whether the building in nineteen sixty-one existed the way it was submitted to the board in nineteen eighty-four.
Okay.
So that's the pre-existing condition, because you need to have an existing house.
Yeah.
And it had some non-compliances, so the only way those are allowed is if they were permitted pre-sixty-one.
So if we show that, we can then use this?
Then you treat it as if it's a brand-new application, and you come here and you say, oh, look, we've got this existing house with these existing side yard conditions, and we want a straight, a vertical extension and a straight-line back extension.
Okay, so you just have to establish what happened in that?
Yeah, yeah.
And I just wanted to suggest to wrap up, or to sort of help smooth this along, is I think that you can do the research. And I, I would think it'd be a good idea for council staff to...
Yes.
Do a call or something, so that we, so that we're all on the same page as to how we're approaching this, because if it, and I want to speak to Carlo, who might have some memory of how we've treated these. Because if there is, if there needs to be an amendment to the variance, then that's a...
We have to do that.
That's a different thing, and we want to sort of frame that correctly.
Right.
And so I want to, I just want to, it's not a thing just submit it and let's go. Let's have a conversation at staff level.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Right, right.
And so that we're all doing this the consistent way.
So I'll research the history, give you a call, and we'll discuss.
Sure, yes.
Because then you can sit down and say, this is what I know about the history.
Yeah.
And then, then there were other questions. Assuming you're pursuing the special permit, then, of course, we don't work with total demolitions of houses, so the lifts of these houses is always tricky. I mean, houses are, of course, lifted all the time. Build-Back does it every day.
Yeah.
Many times a day. So we need a description, or let's say diagrams, showing how the house is going to be lifted and not demolished, right?
The plans actually show that the house will stay where it is, and it's going to be built on top of. That's what the plans show. The plans show the cellar walls as the existing home.
Right.
But that cannot be, because the building is of wood-frame construction, and it's not water-resistant construction material. So it has to be lifted, and then you build like concrete walls for the cellar.
And I'd like to note that the architect, Joe Mealy, is unfortunately on vacation right now, but I wanted to get all of your comments for today, so he can come back next time and actually address all of your stuff as the architect here at this meeting.
All right, okay.
There was also the question that the side yards that you're using in your proposed plans don't really agree with the side yards that were on the B.S.A. prior-approved plans?
And a survey.
Right.
Right, then we need a survey also.
Yeah, we have seen on some of the build-Back houses where it's a masonry building, and they can't lift it, or they can, but it's really a drag. So that's a situation where they've got water-resistant construction, and they build the new portion of the house on top.
Yeah.
And they essentially turn the lower part into storage, you know?
Yeah.
And then the prior variance did not permit the vertical enlargement of that jet-out into the side yard?
Yeah.
But you're requesting like a four-story jet-out into the side yard, which I didn't really think was appropriate. And then there was a question regarding the use of the base plane as nine feet above curb. We really don't have anything to verify what curb elevation is. And I guess we'll be...
That's from the survey, then, no?
Right, and we'll be talking to, I guess, D.O.B. regarding how that is applied in terms of whether you can use that higher elevation. But there's also the question of, if you follow the special permit, it's a neighborhood character issue, you know, well. Or a variance.
Okay. Right, so just so, so Darrell, here's, so this one we're going to send to the flood administrator at D.O.B., okay? So what we do with all, maybe you've heard this before. We do with all of these applications that are in the floodplain, we send them to the D.O.B.'s flood administrator to make sure everything's being done properly.
Yeah.
Okay?
And you also said modify sections, just so exterior walls and joists.
Yes. So that, that's again, part of how you're proving that the existing house is being retained?
But you need to, this has to be an alteration.
Yeah.
But the home can't, can't stay where it is. It has to be lifted.
So that's part of it.
And also, this house, according to your streetscape drawing, is taller than the other houses that have already been lifted. This is an area where many of the houses have lifted already. So I can't imagine why this house has to be taller than the known lifts. You know, a lot of the times, we look at these lift applications, and we try to imagine what the neighborhood's going to look like once they start lifting the houses. This one, they've done it. So now you know what context is.
Commissioner Matinas, and I think that perhaps it's taller because they're overlifting.
Yes.
Well, they're using that nine-foot as the base plane option. So the home above grade to the top of the roof is actually forty-four feet.
Yeah.
Which is...
It's taller.
It's, yeah, it's very tall.
And then I think you also mentioned something about parking, but that was still...
Right, it looked to me, when I visited the site, that it has two parking spaces in the front.
Yeah.
And it seems that the layout is, is keeping that, even though they're calling it part of it a pathway. And you've gotten violations for that, I guess, second parking space? So, I think that should be looked at. And then you referenced a section of the zoning resolution, which I didn't understand why you used that. The twenty-five fifteen, which just mentions that the maximum number of spaces for a one-family home is three or something?
Yeah. Any other comments?
I had a question regarding the attic.
Oh, yes.
Especially the way it's represented in the plan and section. And I am concerned about the height of the attic that has been proposed, and that it runs the entire length of the proposed extension, enlargement, especially if that's not going to be an habitable space.
Yeah.
And that can also further bring the building height down. And I am also questioning that additional, like, hangout space in the attic next to the boiler room. I'm not sure what it is for and what it's going to serve. I would recommend eliminating that if it's not part of any of the functional needs.
And then we also needed more information on the rear yards.
Okay.
So there's, it shows there is an eight-foot rear yard next door. So I guess the, what is, what's the story with that? How high is the building? And is it legal? I don't see how it's legal, but maybe it is, because it might have been built way back in the day. So I don't believe you provided Sanborn maps to show us what the rear yard conditions were back in the day?
I think I didn't notice a comment, but...
Okay, but I mean, I, what I mean by that is old Sanborns as opposed to a current one. That's to help you establish whether those rear yards of the neighbors are existing conditions. Do you have? What year is that?
Nineteen thirty.
Nineteen thirty, okay. Okay, so may, so all right, so you did, so...
Sorry, sorry.
But I... So, but anyway, so, but the point is, how tall are the buildings that have shallow rear yards? Because there are complying rear yards to the immediate rear and on the other side. But there are other nearby houses with eighteen-foot rear yards.